Good morning, welcome to the September twenty second, two thousand and twenty public hearing, public meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
Okay, thank you, and welcome everyone to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's September twenty second public hearing and public meeting. Today, we will be starting with a public meeting item on a proposed designation, and then we will be moving to a public hearing for another proposed designation. And those will be followed by a public meeting item for an application for work on designated properties, which has already had a public hearing but was read into the record. So we will be taking testimony on that public meeting item, and then our regular public hearing agenda for applications on work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you're interested in just watching, you should do that on our YouTube channel at our homepage on YouTube. And if you're interested in participating in any of the hearing items, you can join the meeting at the time that is estimated on our public hearing agenda, and we will provide the links with each item as we present them. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate Leemos-McKale, our Director of Research, to start her agenda.
Thanks, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. The first item this morning on the research agenda is LP two six four six, Public School Forty Eight, now PS seventy five Q at PS forty eight, the Robert E. Perry School. One fifty five dash oh two one hundred and eighth Avenue, AKA one fifty five dash oh two to one fifty six dash zero zero one hundred and eighth Avenue, one oh eight dash oh one to one oh eight dash oh three, one hundred and fifty fifth Street, Borough of Queens, block one oh one four four, lot forty two. The proposed for designation is the Art Deco Style School Building designed by Walter C. Martin, first proposed in nineteen thirty one and constructed in nineteen thirty two to thirty six. Okay. Are you seeing the first slide now?
Yes.
First proposed in nineteen thirty one and completed in nineteen thirty six, the Art Deco Style Public School Forty Eight in Jamaica represents an extensive construction program undertaken by the New York City Board of Education to relieve overcrowding in existing school districts and to meet the needs of new growing residential neighborhoods after World War One. It is a notable design by its architect Walter C. Martin and an early use of the Art Deco style for elementary school building, demonstrating innovations in school planning and a stylistic shift away from the more traditional revival styles commonly used in the early twentieth century and into the nineteen forties. At the public hearing on August fourth, two thousand and twenty, the commission received support for the proposed designation of Public School Forty Eight from four people, including Councilmember Adrian Adams and representatives from the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, and the Art Deco Society of New York. No one spoke in opposition. In addition, the agency received one letter of support. Public School Forty Eight is located at the southeast corner of one hundred and eighth Avenue and one hundred and fifty fifth Street in South Jamaica, Queens, as shown here. Jamaica, one of the five towns that made up Queens County prior to eighteen ninety eight, was a vital link between the farms of Long Island and the markets of New York. The downtown developed throughout the eighteenth and nineteenth centuries as a result of improved roads and public transportation. However, the area known as South Jamaica remained largely rural farmland until the twentieth century, as shown in these maps from eighteen ninety one and nineteen oh seven, and residential development remained scattered into the nineteen twenties. The blue star marks the approximate location of Public School Forty Eight. Plans for a single citywide school system began prior to New York City's consolidation, and a reorganized Board of Education was established in nineteen oh one to administer the system. Prior, the prior year, the state legislature had amended the consolidated school law governing the city's schools, abolishing separate segregated schools for African American children. By nineteen oh one, PS Forty Eight was established in a one-story wood schoolhouse, which had been built in eighteen eighty six as Jamaica's quote colored school. This schoolhouse is shown in the image on the right and outlined in black on the map. PS Forty Eight was housed there until the new school was completed in nineteen thirty six, in the location shown on the map with the blue star. The neighborhood's population grew in the twentieth century as the former farmland of South Jamaica was developed, and a diverse working-class neighborhood grew around the area that would be chosen for the new school. Efforts to replace the old schoolhouse had begun as early as nineteen oh five, but it was not until nineteen thirty one that plans to build a new Public School Forty Eight at one hundred and eighth Avenue and one hundred and fifty fifth Street were first announced. The following year, it was reported that the new school would be the first to be built along the P-type plan, incorporating an extended auditorium wing with space for more classrooms, as shown in the rendering above. Superintendent of Buildings Walter C. Martin had originally developed his P-type plan in nineteen thirty, but it appears to have been put aside until its use for the Jamaica School at PS Forty Eight. Walter C. Martin served as Superintendent of Buildings for the Board of Education from nineteen twenty eight until nineteen thirty eight, during which time he designed hundreds of new schools or additions to existing schools throughout the five boroughs, including thirty four new elementary schools and five high schools in Queens alone. The Herman Ritter Junior High School in the Bronx, shown here, is perhaps his most notable building, built in nineteen twenty nine to thirty one and a New York City landmark. Martin's school designs were executed in a variety of styles, from Renaissance revival to colonial revival to art deco, displaying a range of stylistic approaches to school design in the interwar period. Martin used the modernistic or Art Deco style for some large projects such as Herman Ritter and adapted it for smaller elementary schools like Public School Forty Eight, where his use of the style created modern civic monuments for growing communities. Constructed between nineteen thirty two and thirty six, Martin's design for the three-story Public School Forty Eight indeed imparts a sense of monumentality appropriate to a civic structure, anchored with strong corner towers and featuring vertical piers with stylized foliate capitals, creating the impression of a crenellated parapet. His use of the Art Deco style drew inspiration from industrial and commercial buildings, reflected in its large window openings, originally with awning windows, as seen in the nineteen forty tax photo, and incorporated distinctive decorative treatment not seen on some of his other schools in the style. Drawing upon the decorative palette used in his design for Ritter Junior High School, Martin highlighted the main facade with bi-color brick spandrels, bi-color terracotta plaques evocative of the importance of education, stylized foliate plaques atop the piers, and granite entrance surrounds featuring stylized eagles that harbor bronze doors with bronze and framed multi-light transoms. These highly distinctive decorative features set PS Forty Eight apart from other schools in the period and style. In lieu of carving the name of the school on the facade, Martin applied stylized cartouches with the school's numerical designation, balancing them with the New York City and Board of Education seals just above the base of the towers. Prominent within the neighborhood of South Jamaica, Queens, Public School Forty Eight has served its community for more than seventy years. Little changed since its opening on May fourth, nineteen thirty six, it is a highly intact example of Walter C. Martin's use of the Art Deco style in the nineteen thirties. Its successful blend of Art Deco design elements en masseing was novel for elementary schools at the time it was proposed, and it represents a significant early application of the style for New York City schools. The research staff and Mary Ann Percival did the research here and wrote the report, recommends that the commission designate Public School Forty Eight, now Public School Seventy Five Q at PS Forty Eight, the Robert E. Perry School, as a New York City landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, do we have any questions? For Kate or Mary Ann? No, or any thoughts?
Sarah, I raised my hand.
Sarah, you have a hand raised.
Okay, I see. Go ahead, Commissioner Devonshire.
The, the, in case I missed it, I don't, I don't think I did. The, the operation of the windows notwithstanding, the multi-light windows on this are really kind of awkward and strange. Is there some way that we can mention in the designation that these windows are replacements and they don't match the originals so that in the future, when someone comes and they, and they say, well, it's already got divided lights, we don't have to follow a precedent because it wasn't mentioned in the designation report?
Yes, absolutely. We mentioned that they're replacements and we can describe what the original windows were that were replaced. We also include a tax photo in the report, so that's there for reference.
Yeah, but you know, in, in the past, people have said, well, it's not listed in the designation report as their evidence for not doing something or doing something. Okay, thanks. Just want to be sure.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
I just want to comment that I'm very happy to see this designation. I think it's a very fine building and just kind of a lovely example of, and the ornamentation, everything about it is a really nice example of a public school and a good addition to landmarks in Queens and in this community especially. So I'm very pleased to see it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? All right, well, like Diana, I'm also a Queens resident and a representative from Queens. And so I'm really delighted that we're at this point in the process today. PS Forty Eight, as we heard in the presentation, is unique as one of the first elementary schools in New York City to incorporate the Art Deco style, and if designated, would only be the second Art Deco style building in New York City to be a landmark. And that design represents the modernization of school design in the nineteen thirties and the ideal of creating monumental civic structures to serve neighborhood children. The school also speaks to overcoming challenges originally established to provide equal access to public education after New York City schools were integrated at the turn of the twentieth century and constructed during the Depression with funds from the Public Works Administration. And also, I want to note that if designated, this would be the first landmark in South Jamaica. So we're, you know, we have, I think, this in many ways merits on many levels, and I'm also delighted it's here. So with that, I think I'd love to move this to a vote. Diana, would you make the, the motion? And we'll take a vote.
Thank you. I make a motion to designate Public School Forty Eight.
Do you have the, the, the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, PS seventy five Q at PS Forty Eight, the Robert E. Perry School. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate Public School Forty Eight, now PS seventy five Q at PS Forty Eight, the Robert E. Perry School, one fifty five zero two one zero, one hundred and eighth Avenue, AKA one fifty five dash zero two one fifty six dash zero zero one, one hundred and eighth Avenue, one hundred and eight dash zero one, one hundred and eight dash zero three, one hundred and fifty fifth Street Borough of Queens is a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP twenty six forty six, dated September twenty second, two thousand and twenty. I also moved that the Borough of Queens tax map lot one zero one four four, lot forty two, be designated as its landmark site.
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes. Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Devonshire, you want to mute?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Rich, not, yes.
Rich, I've joined the meeting, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Bland.
That's an aye for me, too.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed unless there was any other votes, the motion carries.
All right, great. So this is our latest New York City landmark, our second Art Deco style school building to be designated and the first landmark in South Jamaica. And I want to thank Adrian Adams, the Chair of the Landmark Subcommittee of the City Council, who asked us to look at this building, which is in her district. And that led us to do a school study and a comparative analysis of designated and undesignated schools. And I think that study is going to be very informative for us going forward. I also want to thank the Department of Education and School Construction Authority for supporting our efforts as we conducted our research. And I also want to note that this is the first designation that we've taken through the whole process from calendaring to designation while working remotely. So, you know, we were able to complete some items that had started while we were in person remotely, but this is the first one that we have, has gone through the entire process. And, you know, I have to say that the research staff has done an incredible job with all of the work that they're doing and with, you know, access limited to certain resources. And I want to say that I'm very proud of the staff and Kate, the team, Mary Ann Percival, who did the research on this item, and all of their efforts to complete the designation, so designation report so thoroughly. So thank you to the team.
Sarah, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I also want to, of course, add my congratulations to our staff for this heroic effort in our new era and remote working. It's occurred to me that, and I don't know if this is possible within our constraints, but it occurred to me that it might be interesting, presumably this school will be back in operation soon, if not exactly right now. And I just thought it might be interesting if you could work out something with the principal and some teachers to actually go to the school somehow or other, in some form, and actually let the kids know that their school has just been named a landmark in the last few weeks, let's say, and what that means and why it's a landmark and point out the reasons and so forth. You know, the earlier we get kids hooked on the idea of preservation and conservation of their city, the better it is for people like us who believe so strongly in preserving historic buildings. So just a thought.
It's a wonderful thought, Fred. Thank you. And I think that we'll work hard to try to do that. I think that's an excellent idea, a great way for students coming back into school to feel very excited and proud, and as you say, to start to bring the sort of preservation spirit up along, starting in the elementary school, so.
Right. Good.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item, Kate.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. The first item on the research department's public hearing agenda is LP two six four seven, East Twenty Fifth Street Historic District in Brooklyn. And the proposed district has boundaries described in the agenda and in the following presentation. Good morning, Commissioners. The proposed historic district is a remarkably cohesive group of fifty-six row houses built by a single developer, the Henry Meyer Building Company, between nineteen oh nine and nineteen twelve. All were built in the Renaissance revival style and remain well-preserved. The proposed historic district extends along both sides of East Twenty Fifth Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D in Brooklyn's Flatbush neighborhood. In determining the boundaries of the proposed district, staff analyzed a broader area and concluded that this block stands out within its larger neighborhood context for its consistency and high level of historic integrity. Although its developer, Henry Meyer, also built row houses adjacent to the proposed district facing East Twenty Sixth Street, those houses are of a different style and considerably less intact. This section of East Twenty Fifth Street largely retains its character of a century ago. As shown on these maps, the proposed historic district owes its exceptional cohesiveness and strong sense of place to three major factors: its construction within a very short timeframe by a single developer, its architectural consistency entirely in the Renaissance revival style, and its excellent historic integrity. All fifty-six houses in the proposed historic district remain well-preserved. Flatbush was initially its own town, developing separately from the city of Brooklyn until its annexation by Brooklyn in eighteen ninety four. Although the Brooklyn Flatbush and Coney Island Railroad linked the neighborhood with downtown Brooklyn in eighteen seventy eight, Flatbush remained largely rural until the eighteen nineties. This map shows the location of the proposed historic district in eighteen seventy three on what was still the Vander Veer Farm in southeastern Flatbush. It also shows the new Prospect Park to its north and west, which would be the focus of the neighborhood's earliest residential development. Residential development in Flatbush was originally focused in the areas directly east and south of Prospect Park in the late nineteenth century, which were also convenient to the Brooklyn and Brighton Beach Railroad. Important early developments included sections of the Prospect-Lefferts Gardens Historic District east of the park, the Prospect Park South Historic District with its opulent freestanding houses, and the suburban developments farther south, including Ditmuss Park, Fisk Terrace, and Midwood Park, all designated historic districts begun by the early twentieth century. While other areas of Flatbush were developed by nineteen oh five, the area around the proposed district, shown here in red, remained semi-rural at that time, consisting mostly of wood-framed buildings scattered along an incomplete street grid. But within a few years, new transportation routes to and through the neighborhood spurred intensive development in the vicinity of East Twenty Fifth Street. Major transportation improvements included the Nostrand Avenue Streetcar Line, five blocks east of the proposed district, which crossed the New Williamsburg Bridge in nineteen oh six and linked Flatbush with Manhattan's Lower East Side. West of the proposed district, a substantial upgrade and expansion of the Brighton Railroad in nineteen oh eight brought it essentially to its present form as the city's B and Q subway lines and was heralded as, quote, "one of the great transportation highways of the metropolitan district," unquote. The Henry Meyer Building Company purchased the site of the proposed district in the spring of nineteen oh nine. This property was part of the former farm, outlined in blue here on the map, established by Cornelius Jans Van der Veer soon after leaving Holland in sixteen fifty nine. In seventeen ninety, it belonged to his grandson, also named Cornelius, whose household consisted of five white males, five white females, and ten enslaved people whose genders were not recorded. The farm was known to generations of Flatbush residents for its windmill, shown here, that reputedly sheltered African Americans seeking refuge during the eighteen sixty-three draft riots. The windmill was destroyed in a fire in eighteen seventy nine, and by the eighteen nineties, Van der Veer descendants began selling portions of the farm. Developer Henry Meyer was born in Germany around eighteen sixty four and immigrated to the United States while still in his teens. Starting in the eighteen nineties, his firm constructed approximately seven hundred houses in the Cypress Hills section of Brooklyn's East New York neighborhood, illustrated on the left. Possibly due to Meyer's membership in the Cortel U Club near East Twenty Fifth Street, Meyer ventured into the Flatbush market, and the earliest houses on the East Twenty Fifth Street were completed by the end of nineteen oh nine. In a December nineteen oh nine advertisement, Meyer claimed, quote, "We transformed East New York from a wilderness to a city. We are now operating in Flatbush and are going to duplicate our former success," unquote. Meyer's ads highlighted the area's excellent transit facilities, clubs, and schools, easy access to Brighton Beach and Coney Island, and the privacy that only a single-family house could offer. Modern features included parquet floors, up-to-date plumbing, laundry facilities, gas and electric fixtures, and oak and birch trim from the company's own mill. Meyer's East Twenty Fifth Street houses were executed in the Renaissance revival style, featuring limestone or brownstone fronts, full-height rounded or angled projecting bays, foliated keystones, and classically ornamented entrance surrounds and cornices. The two sides of East Twenty Fifth Street are mere images of each other. Unlike similar houses constructed elsewhere in Brooklyn at that time, which were constructed as more affordable two-family homes, these were built as single-family houses, reflecting Flatbush's affluent reputation. Although about a dozen of the houses are known to have been constructed with rooftop balustrades, they do not appear to have been built consistently across the block. Most houses did not have them at the time of the circa nineteen forty tax photos, and the balustrades themselves were not of uniform design. One house, three sixty East Twenty Fifth Street, retains its original balustrade today and is shown here. Following an economic downturn coinciding with their completion, many of the houses languished on the market. In nineteen twelve, the unsold homes were acquired by another Brooklyn developer, Realty Associates, which subsequently sold them off. "They were built too good to sell in the present slow times," Brooklyn Life reported. And rather than retail them at lower prices, Henry Meyer decided to sell them in bulk and get out of the building business for the present. This map, from shortly after the proposed district was built, gives a sense of its remarkable cohesiveness, which stands out in the surrounding area. This area's irregular grid with short and angled streets and history of primarily small-scale development contributed to a diverse array of building types in both masonry and wood. Buildings tended to be built individually or in small groups, making the long, unbroken rows of East Twenty Fifth Street especially distinctive. During their early years, these houses were owned and occupied by the families of white merchants or other upper-middle, upper-middle-class professionals. In recent decades, their ownership has come to reflect Flatbush's increasing diversity and the growth of its African-American and Caribbean-American communities. Since two thousand and four, this section of East Twenty Fifth Street has won the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens Greenest Block in Brooklyn Contest four times and earned several second- and third-place finishes and window box awards. The pride of the street's homeowners and their houses and street is evident, not only in the lush greenery of their front yards, but in the proposed district's outstanding historic integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, do we have any questions before we move to testimony? All right, I don't see any hands, so I think we will now move to testimony. If you are in the meeting and you wish to testify, please raise your hand so we can identify you. We will start with people who signed up in advance, and then we will move to everyone else. So just as long as you have your hand up, we will get to you. So, and I'm going to turn it over to our Executive Director, Lisa Crisavich, to manage the testimony.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And I'm going to start by calling Rachel Goodfriend, followed by Julia Charles, and then followed by Carol Renaud. So I'll bring you into the room, and you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. Please make sure to state your name for the record. And everybody has three minutes to speak, please. So Rachel?
Thank you. My name is Rachel Goodfriend, and I am the co-chair of the Land Use Committee of Brooklyn Community Board Seventeen. The Land Use Committee applauds the East Twenty Fifth Street Historic District Initiative for their hard work and dedication towards preserving their significant block. The Land Use Committee voted to support the historic district on February sixth of this year. On February nineteenth of this year, the members of the Community Board Seventeen unanimously voted to support a historic district on East Twenty Fifth Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D. The Land Use Committee honors the East Twenty Fifth Street Historic District Initiative's efforts as part of our holistic approach to preserve and protect the culture of East Flatbush, where we have some of the highest rates of homeownership by Black New Yorkers. The Land Use Committee is thrilled to support a historic district that helps our overall goal of contextualizing the built environment of Community Board Seventeen and honors the culture of the community. We hope that the Landmarks Preservation Commission recognizes the meaningful community support and approves the East Twenty Fifth Street Historic District. Further, it's our sincere hope that the East 25th Street Initiative becomes a catalyst for future historic districts and communities of color throughout New York City. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rachel. Okay, Julia Charles, we bring you in as a panelist. And Julia, just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. We may have lost Julia for a moment. Julia, I don't see you right now, so I think we're going to skip you and we can come back to you. And I'm going to call the next person, which is Carol Renaud. So Carol, just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? I'm just making sure I'm in a car.
Yes, if you could just state your name for the record, too, please.
Yes, I'm Carol Renaud, co-president of the Three Hundred East 25th Street Block Association with a personalized testimony. First of all, I'd like to thank the Historic District Council and the Landmark Preservation Commission for their time, guidance, and diligence that they have shown towards our cause. To our neighbors and community, thank you for your support and for being great stewards. In nineteen ninety-seven, when our family was searching for our first home, we viewed over twenty-five before settling on three nineteen East 25th Street. What initially appealed to us was that this block was different than the surrounding neighborhood. We were transformed by the neat row of homes, the style, structure of the buildings, the high windows, the wide doors, a stoop to sit and relax, a place to garden, and the aesthetically appealing sight that existed on a block within walking distance of a top-tier CUNY school, Brooklyn College. Upon viewing the interior, the detailed woodworking, fireplace, skylights, column and superior craftsmanship won our hearts. The previous owner had lived in this home for thirty-two years, and her exemplary stewardship of the building was evident. She had many offers to purchase, but entrusted our family to carry on the stewardship in like manner. We have lived up to our agreement and have done everything in our control to ensure that this property will remain intact for future families. I'm appealing to the Landmarks Preservation Commission to partner with us and further strengthen our endeavor. As a New York public school global history teacher, I get to reinforce the importance of building on and learning from the past with my students on a daily basis in our classrooms. On field trips, we've had the opportunity of traveling through numerous New York neighborhoods. These interactions have given us a firmer understanding of who were here before us and how these neighborhoods relay their stories through its buildings. These buildings have provided great detail and given us a firmer grasp of New York and its diverse culture. I cannot imagine what historical story would exist in Kensington without Victorian homes, in Sunset Park without the row homes, and in Brooklyn Heights without its Greek Revival architectural style, and now in Flatbush without these limestones and brownstones. Lastly, as an avid traveler, fortunate to have traveled to over thirty-four countries, my appreciation of history and preservation remains at the forefront. When we plan our family vacations, we generally go off the beaten path to truly connect with the cultures that currently exist. Lasting connections are often made through visits to the existing buildings and historic homes. The historic Houton District in Beijing, China, and well-preserved Morocco are two such places that connected the past and present for us. In the same manner, when future generations and visitors embark upon East 25th Street and see what I saw in nineteen ninety-seven, they too will be able to enjoy the historical, cultural, and even environmental benefits of these architecturally sound homes. We thank you once again, and we hope that this section of Flatbush will be preserved.
Julia, I see that you're back, so we're going to try and bring you in. I'm going to promote you to a panelist. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
That's good.
There we go.
Sorry, I had technical difficulties this morning. Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great, good morning. My name is Julia Charles. I'm the founder and lead for the East 25th Street Historic District Initiative. I reside at three three six East 25th Street in Flatbush, Brooklyn. It is my honor to provide a live testimony today in support of the proposed East 25th Street Historic District. My family and I moved onto East 25th Street August two thousand thirteen after being displaced by Hurricane Sandy. Immediately upon entering the block, we knew we came to a magical place that will be our forever home. The foundation of New York City's iconic groundstones and limestones, developed by Henry Meyer Company, almost hailing comparison to the lush streetscape gardens admired by all that visit, especially during the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens Greenest Block in Brooklyn competition. It is no surprise that the homes here on this block are so carefully intact. The residents here have nurtured and cared for their homes even during the most challenging times in New York City. They are model stewards of our Flatbush community. However, rapid and overdevelopment has affected our community tremendously. Our sister block of East 26th Street has recently endured a full demolition of a row house. The residents of East 25th Street, past, present, have nurtured their century-old framed, uh, century-old homes framed by prize-winning gardens with tremendous care. It is only befitting that our city honors its rich cultural and architectural history by designating our block as the one hundred and fifty-first historic district. I'd just like to thank the commissioners for your time, the research team, Chair Carol for working with our community-led campaign. Thank you to our community partners, the Historic District Council, especially Kelly Carroll for your guidance and advocacy, Councilmember Farah Lewis, Assemblymember Wadnis Bishot, the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens, Nina Brown, Community Board Seventeen Land Use Committee, and most of all, my neighbors. Without you, none of this would actually be possible. Thank you.
You're muted, Lisa.
Sorry, sorry. Kelly Carroll will be followed by Andrea Goldwin, and then Phoebe Blake. I have you signed up if you want to speak. Maybe you could raise your hand. Good morning. We're all set for you.
Good morning, Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This year, HDC selected East Flatbush as one of our six to celebrate neighborhoods with a special emphasis on the block of East 25th Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D. We are proud to work with this special block from the first phone call to our office to its LPC public hearing today. Owners and residents of the row houses of East 25th Street take pride in preserving their block and creating beauty. The result? An intact, early-twentieth-century streetscape with exceptional gardens. This block's demonstrated stewardship has won the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens annual contest as the greenest block in Brooklyn a whopping four times. Deeper-than-usual gardens sit in front of intact brownstone and limestone row houses, all of which retain their original cornices, carved keystones and door surrounds, and many retain iron stoop railings and doors. The proposed district comprises fifty-six houses that face East 25th Street. The block was developed by beginning of May nineteen oh nine by the Henry Meyer Building Company. Henry Meyer also owned the Germania Real Estate Company and Jamaica Bay Improvement Association and developed much of the Flatbush neighborhood by the turn of the twentieth century by selling the parcels of what would become Van Dever Park and the New York City-designated Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District. While Germania didn't build homes, the Henry Meyer Building Company created approximately one thousand homes in Brooklyn between eighteen ninety-four and nineteen oh nine, with construction concentrated in Cypress Hills and East New York. East 25th Street was among the company's first and largest foray in development in the Flatbush section of Brooklyn. The Brooklyn Daily Eagle described the block's development as "one family houses of a high grade to sell from seven to eight thousand dollars. We shall fill up both sides of East 25th Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D, all our two-story structures, some with limestone and the others with brownstone fronts. They will be finished in hardwood with parquet floors, tiled kitchens, shower baths, and electric lights. We have our own molding mill on Force Tube Avenue in East New York to prepare all our own trim for our houses and experience in building to see that good work goes into them." The Eagle further reported that no other region in Brooklyn showed this level of growth at the time and that the Flatbush territory was rapidly filling up with homes. These homes are representative of transit infrastructure improvements in Flatbush by a speculative developer, as Meyer also graded and paved all of the streets, installed curbs and sidewalks, and laid the sewer, water, and gas lines for both East 25th and East 26th Streets. This development is demonstrative of Flatbush's rapid transition from a suburban location characterized by detached large houses to the densely-built rowhouse blocks that arrived in the years after the city's consolidation. Further, there are no rowhouse blocks in Flatbush that are protected as New York City Historic Districts, and this block is certainly a standout in terms of its integrity, residence support, and beauty. We urge the to schedule a vote as soon as possible to designate the first landmarks in East Flatbush since nineteen sixty-five, when the Wykoff House, New York City's first landmark, was designated. And I also want to personally thank Julia Charles for all of her incredible organizing and hard work. From everything from making the pins to organizing neighbors to creating outreach during the pandemic. It was truly an honor to work with her, and I thank everyone who had a hand in it today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Andrea Goldwin?
Hey, good morning, Chair Carol and Commissioners. I'm Andrea Goldwin, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy is so pleased to join residents and advocates to support designation of the East 25th Street Historic District in Flatbush. This handsome block of row houses well represents the architecture and history of Brooklyn in the early twentieth century. Transportation improvements and the completion of Prospect Park led to residential development in the neighborhoods closest to the park at the turn of the century, while expansion of the transit system and success of that first wave of development encouraged more building in the Flatbush section and transformed areas such as East 25th Street from semi-rural to a dense urban community by nineteen twelve. The fifty-six low-scale houses are notable for intact limestone and brownstone Renaissance Revival-style facades. They maintain their historic front scale, materials, and decorative details. The series of deeply set-back front area ways are exceptionally well-maintained and often glorious. Those gardens have been recognized and celebrated as the best of Brooklyn several times. Overall, the block exhibits a strong sense of place that merits designation. This area of Brooklyn is facing growing development pressures. We thank the commission for bringing this designation forward, urge a swift vote, and hope that the other distinctive residential, excuse me, that other distinctive residential blocks in Flatbush will soon be heard. The Conservancy is also happy to offer building owners assistance from our Technical Services and Historic Corporateies Fund programs. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Phoebe Blake? Signed up to speak. All right, I'm going to bring you in. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. Okay, Phoebe, I just have to accept being unmuted. There you go.
On the camera?
And I think you might have your sound playing in the background, but...
One second.
Okay. Okay, Phoebe, I
Okay.
Just have to accept being unmuted. There you go.
One second. One, sorry about that. Okay, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so my name is Phoebe Blake. I'm the former president of the Three Hundred East 25th Street Block Association. We've lived in this house on this block since nineteen ninety-seven, when our daughter was just three years old. She's now twenty-six. We actually were kicked out of our apartment because she was a noisy kid. So this block, my husband found it one day while just driving through Flatbush, and he actually brought me over to see the block. He said, "You wouldn't believe this block. It's just beautiful," and I couldn't believe it. So this was the first house that we saw in our house search. Of course, he said that we couldn't get the first house because it had no parking, but I really fell in love with the house. We loved the built-in cabinets, the stained glass skylights, the bay windows, the window seats in the bedroom, the pocket doors, the fireplace, the triple parlors, the inlaid floors, but most of all, we loved the vibe and the warmth of the house and the block. From the time we moved here, I became involved in a block association, first as a secretary, and then vice president and president. It probably was like a maybe eighteen-year span I've been involved in a block and in maintaining the block. We've won the greenest block in Brooklyn several times. The most important aspect of the block and the, is the people that live here. Some of the warmest, most wonderful people, and I think what threatens us most is the development. I think being designated as a historic a landmark would protect us from the developers and keep our way of life, our diversity intact. And I think I appreciate all the work that Julia has done and the Landmarking Committee, and I would really like to see this beautiful block and these beautiful people designated as a historic district in Flatbush. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phoebe. Okay, I see one more hand raised. Maddy Smith? I'm going to promote you to a panelist. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose, and then please state your name for the record.
Hi. My name is Maddy.
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Maddy Smith. My wife, Kohru Kumitani, and I are homeowners at residence at three forty-nine East 25th Street. We have two daughters that we are raising in this house and on the block. And we have both lived in Brooklyn for almost twenty years. This is our first home. We intend for it to be our last. We found this block when we were living nearby in a neighboring neighborhood, taking our daughters for a walk in their stroller and fell in love with it immediately, and took walks down this block for the next six months, waiting and hoping that there might be a for-sale sign in a window, which there was. We moved here in July of twenty seventeen, and we have been completely welcomed by the neighborhood and the community. We fell in love with the block because of its architectural integrity and history. But we love the block now because of the community and our neighbors and their support. And the reason we have such a strong community and the reason we have such a strong neighborhood is because of the architectural history of this block. of this block, and we're going to raise our children here. We're going to raise our daughters here, and we want to preserve this for future families to raise their children here as well and to keep the community going and growing, and I just want to, the last thing I want to say is just that preserving our history is an investment in our future. And I just want to thank Julia Charles and Ms. Rena for making this happen and all their hard and tireless work and everyone who's been involved to get us to this point. Thank you.
You're muted, Lisa.
I'm sorry. One last name. I apologize for that. Shelley, I have brought you in. Shelley Worrell, you just need to unmute yourself, which you've done, and turn on your camera if you choose. Please just state your name for the record.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Shelley Worrell. I'm also a resident of the 300 East 25th Street Proposed Historic District, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of Caribbean, and I'm also the person who spearheaded the designation of Little Caribbean in NYC, and our block is home to a number of Caribbean immigrants. And we also live in a very large and diverse Caribbean community, and as we mentioned previously on the panel, a lot of them are homeowners, and also as a homeowner, first generation of Caribbean descent, that's a Flatbush native, I just wanted to lend my personal support as a homeowner on this block, as well as my organizational support to this designation.
Sorry about that. That was not for you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, okay. I don't see any other hands raised.
All right, great. And Rich, have we at this point received any written testimony that we haven't heard about today through speakers?
We have received a total of 26 letters of support, a handful of them by today's speakers, but not including letters of support from Councilmember Lewis, Assemblymember Bichette, in addition to the Community Board's letter of support.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any thoughts or questions? Okay. Well, I want to thank everyone for their participation today. The, you know, it's been incredible working with the community on East 25th Street, and I want to thank Julia Charles in particular for reaching out to me and starting the relationship. I'd like to thank Historic Districts Council for giving them the guidance and facilitating that interaction. And, you know, the, I think it's just, it was very moving listening to the testimony today. It's clear how this block has a sense of place that attracted people and that the community has been incredible stewards and have a shared love of this block, and so I found this testimony to be very moving. Commissioner Gustafson, I see you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to second or follow up on what you just said about the community. The testimony that we heard today was, you know, incredibly, you know, positive and articulate, and it's given to us by people who clearly care a lot about exactly the kinds of things that make Historic Districts valuable to diverse communities in the city. And so I was just thrilled to hear all of it, and I thank people for spending their time, you know, contributing that information to us and enabling us to make a good decision. So thank you.
Great, thank you. I think it's a real example about how preservation of historic fabric and communities are so intertwined. So today we will close the hearing, and we will bring this back for a vote in the very near future. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
I second that motion.
Okay, and I'm just unmuting everybody, and in some cases you have to accept that request so we can have a vote on closing the hearing. Okay. Everybody in favor of closing the hearing today, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. The hearing is closed. We will continue to accept any written testimony that is submitted up until the time that we schedule the vote, and we will schedule that vote in the near future, and we'll let everybody know. Thank you all, and we will now move to the Preservation Department agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first item on the Preservation Agenda is a public meeting item. It was actually read into the record on September 15th, so you haven't heard it yet. This is the first time you'll be seeing it, and it's an application, docket number 21-01179, 201 Park Avenue South, the Germania Life Insurance Building, an individual landmark. It's Borough of Manhattan, Block 873, Lot 1. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness. A second empire-style commercial building designed by Dench and Yost and built in 1910 to 11, and the application is to install a rooftop addition, bulkheads, and mechanical equipment.
Great, thank you. And before we begin, let's make a motion to open the proceeding so the applicants can present. Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
Make a motion. I make a motion so that the applicants can...
Okay, to open the proceedings. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we've opened the proceedings. Edith, will you take us to the applicants?
Sure, the applicants have joined the proceedings, and you now have control of presentation. Just click to begin, and you may proceed. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you so much. My name is Maxwell Powell. I'm a partner at Byers Blinderbell Architects. I'm here today with my colleague Gaspar Melik, on behalf of the owner of the building, Marriott International, and the owner's rep Turner in Townsend. So thank you very much for hearing our proposal today. So we're here in reference to rooftop alterations for 201 Park Avenue South, otherwise known as the W Union Square Hotel in Union Square. It's actually part of a planned interior renovation for the hotel, which is really the first interior renovation since the hotel opened back in 1999. That's been about 20 years. As part of that program, there are a number of infrastructure upgrades that are necessary for mechanical and life safety systems, as well as a programmatic change to be able to occupy the roof. So this proposal seeks to accommodate both of those requirements in a rational and appropriate manner while furthering the relevance of this very important and iconic building on Union Square. So just one note, there are no proposed changes to any of the historic facade elements on the building. All of the modifications are limited to the roof itself above the mansard. So with that, let's see if I can click this along. All right, so, you know, just a quick reference point that, you know, the building is on Park Avenue South and East 17th Street on the northeast corner, just east of the Ladies Mile Historic District and the Gramercy Park Historic District just south of that. The building was designated as an individual landmark back in 1988. So, you know, as we start, we like to kind of go through into a quick timeline of sort of the changes that have occurred to the building over time. As Caroline mentioned, the building was built in 1910, 1911, designed by Dench and Yost. The photo on the left is a photo back in 1910 during construction, and on the right is, you know, as it was built, and it is a great example of a tripartite columnar skyscraper design with a very robust and rusticated three-story base, a very sort of streamlined and consistent middle section of the tower, and then it's all capped by a four-story mansard roof at the very top of the building, and contrasted by a very sort of unique and sort of industrial, and I guess at the time, modern signage element that sort of ran the entire length along 17th Street, which is really quite unique and, you know, sort of one of the most iconic elements of the building's facade. In 1918, the buildings, or the company's name changed, partially due to World War I, from Germania Life to Guardian Life. And so the sign changed, but I think the photo that you see here on the right here, it's, you know, sort of an elevated photo that shows the rooftop, existing bulkhead, as well as, you know, sort of chimneys and other elements that really kind of, you know, just reflected the functional nature of the rooftop, and you'll see that sort of, sort of as changes occurred over time to the roof, you know, the roof really sort of responded to the needs of the building over time and the uses of the building. By 1940s, we found that the balcony that was built with the building was removed, was removed. So this balcony sort of served the 16th floor. We're not sure why that occurred at that time, but this is in many ways sort of the most significant change to the exterior of the building as we kind of went through this timeline of this balcony was removed from the building. In 1957, 58, there was a program for storefront replacement in all of the infills, so all of the storefronts were replaced, and that brings us to 1960, 1961, which was one of two major moments in time for the roof where there were sort of significant changes to the roof. So in 1960, two cooling towers were added to the roof right behind the sign, so that's sort of visible along the southern face of the building and also from the west or the southwest corner, looking back up towards the building. By 1988, the building was designated by landmarks, and that takes us to the second moment of change, which was in 1999, 2000, when the building was converted from an office building to a hotel, which is presently the W Union Square Hotel. So in addition to the sign changing, there were a number of changes up on the roof in terms of equipment and infrastructure changes. All the storefronts were replaced again, as well as a new marquee was added to denote the new entry to the building. So that sort of brings us to today. So these are photos of sort of the current configuration, looking back towards the roof of the building. So on the left is the view sort of diagonally across the park from the southwest corner. You can kind of see the equipment that currently exists up on the roofs of these three elements. The view sort of from the south and sort of the equipment and the bulkhead visible behind the sign, and then the view on the eastern face of the building, which includes an existing bulkhead that comes out to the east facade, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as one of the elements that we're proposing to modify. So we also just quickly looked at sort of the changes, the sort of the two major changes to the rooftop itself in terms of its plan. On the far left is actually the drawing from the original design back in 1910. 17th Street is running up and down here, and Park Avenue South is sort of up along the page going left to right. You know, one of the interesting things is, of course, you know, buildings of this era, you know, when you look at the original drawings and what was intended and what was actually built, there's usually, you know, some differences, or it's not atypical to find some differences. So in this case, you know, the skylights were sort of oriented in the north-south direction. There were eight of them. What was built was, you know, or skylights went in the other direction. There were more of them, there were about 12 of them, as well as the bulkhead itself was a little bit bigger in reality when it was built. And then if you flip over to the first moment of change back in 1960, this shows a configuration of the two cooling towers that were placed right behind the sign. So this portion right here where my hand is, is the armature for the sign, and the two rectangular boxes are the two cooling towers that were installed in 1960. And then in 1999, when the building was converted to the W Hotel, you know, additional changes were added. So there was a cooling tower that remained on the southeast side of the building. The cooling tower that was on the corner was replaced by a large air handling unit, additional fans, ductwork, and all of that stuff, and a new generator was added to the northwest corner, fronting Park Avenue South. So there's sort of the main changes, as well as some internal changes within the bulkhead. So water tanks were added internal to the building. And then just sort of pictorially, you can kind of see, you know, the sort of the three moments as it was built, the condition after the 1960s when the two cooling towers are added, and then where we're at today with the cooling tower, large air handling unit, and then right here, the generator sort of poking up on Park Avenue South. You know, so for us, what was interesting also was we wanted to go back and just take a look at, you know, other hotels that were sort of built in the same time that this building was built, and obviously our building was built as an office building, but we wanted to see, you know, how did those hotels deal with rooftops, right? And we found, you know, a number of examples, including the Esther Hotel, the Biltmore, and the Ritz-Carlton, you know, utilizing their rooftops, and it was really part and parcel with the use of the hotel as built back in, back in the 1910s. And they came in different configurations, so whether they were sort of entirely enclosed or entirely open or partially open or enclosed, you know, they really kind of fit within sort of the style and sort of the use of the building. So it was just interesting for us, you know, now that this building is a hotel, were there elements that kind of informed how outdoor spaces might be used? So how do, so then the question really for us is, well, how do we turn this, which is what we have currently up on the roof, into something that could deal with both the infrastructure issues of upgrading the building and making it relevant and useful for the building moving forward, but also creating open space both indoor and outdoor to be able to be used up on the roof? So just a little bit of point of reference. This is the generator that's basically in the northwest corner of the building facing Park Avenue South. This is the cooling tower, and then this here on the right is really all the stuff that's on the southwest corner of the building currently, right behind the W and the U of the sign, which is includes the air handling unit, ductwork, and a whole bunch of fans and a bunch of other stuff in there. So just pictorially, again, as a diagram, this is where we are today in terms of the elements. The generator, this is Park Avenue South right here, 17th Street's right down in here, generator, bulkheads, existing bulkhead all in here, as well as the air handling unit and the cooling tower. So what we've done here is I've highlighted in sort of this red dashed line the elements that we're proposing to change and to modify in order for us to kind of meet those, that dual objective, right? So one of the first things we needed to do was to try to free up as much as we could on the southwest corner and western facade, or I guess what western-facing portion of the roof, so that we can create enough space to make the rooftop usable. So one of the first things we did was, we actually are proposing to raise the walking surface along the southwest corner, and the reason for that is the existing parapet wall is quite high. It's almost seven feet tall. So we're proposing to raise the, sort of the pavers at this location by about 30 inches so that the relationship of someone on the roof relative to the existing parapet wall would feel more like a traditional steel guardrail parapet condition. When we did that, of course, that has a little bit of a effect, of course, on the stair bulkhead, which would also have to raise by about the same amount of height so that we can actually get up onto the roof terrace. We're also proposing to add a elevator, a two-stop hydraulic elevator to provide ADA access up to the roof, and that would be located sort of right in this location right here. And all of that, of course, would then require us to kind of rethink what we're doing with all of the equipment up here. So first off, all of this stuff here, which is the air handling unit and fans, would get shifted, broken up into multiple pieces of equipment, but lower pieces of equipment and tucked away in other locations on the roof so they're hidden. And we're proposing for the generator, which otherwise needs to grow to meet today's life safety requirements for loads, we found a spot within an enlarged enclosure within the bulkhead. So I'll explain what that's all about, but we were really concerned about growing an existing generator, which is currently just sitting out there unscreened. It's just a piece of equipment that's up on the roof, growing it and, you know, potentially pushing it closer to Park Avenue South, which would make it more visible. So we were able to find some unused space within this existing bulkhead here and expanding that bulkhead so that we can actually take that generator and move it indoors, which we thought was a sort of a very good trade-off in terms of sort of cleaning up the roof over here. So if you take a look at all of those infrastructure elements, this is ultimately what we get just from a pure infrastructure point of view, right? So the walking surface on the southwest corner of the roof, we would raise, as mentioned, up 30 inches, so we have a better relationship with the existing parapet. The stair bulkhead grows by about 30 inches as well, sorry, about four, about four feet, so that we can get out onto the roof. And then this little box here is the existing, or sort of the proposed elevator bulkhead coming up, which would, of course, relocate the generator that's there now. And then this portion here would be the expanded bulkhead. So just a couple notes. The expanded bulkhead does grow in height, but it grows up to the height of an existing northern wall, this wall in gray here. So we're not going any higher than that. We took great pains to try to compress everything as best we could to make sure that we didn't go higher than what's there today. The growth of the bulkhead towards the south grows by about nine feet. So that nine feet would then allow us So that nine feet would then allow us to completely enclose the generator within an indoor space. And then all of that equipment that was here gets broken up into smaller pieces of equipment and tucked sort of behind the parapet wall. And, and the fact that we raised the, the walking service actually allows us to tuck some of the duct work and piping and all of that stuff underneath the walking services, sort of further hide that as well. So the second part of the proposal, of course, is also the, the, the glass enclosed structure, right? So we're proposing a very sort of contemporary, but simple and streamlined enclosed structure that would basically hug the, the bulkhead components. And we picked the system intentionally that would allow us to sort of simplify the structure and allow us to have a system that would minimize the sightlines back up to the building. So what's interesting about the system is that each of these pieces is one element. So it's a self-supporting system that's only supported at the base here and at the, at, at the bulkhead wall. So what's nice about that is we don't have a whole bunch of columns and other structural work that we have to deal with. But it also allows us to create a form that has a lower eve line along the perimeter, which again helps minimize any visibility back up towards the building, but also helps us in terms of, of, of creating a very simple structure that can also open and close. And I'll show you how that works in a moment. The other thing we did here is we chamfered the corner, the southwest corner, also in efforts to minimize any sightline views that you might see from, from a distance back up to the building. Next slide. So this is just a quick diagram, again, sort of where we were are today. The proposal with all the infrastructure and the glass enclosure, and then the potential for the glass enclosure to actually open up, so that we can really be able to use the rooftop in all seasons, which is really, I think, especially given today where we are, sort of a real benefit of, of this type of system. So what I have here is just a series of before and afters and plan and elevation to kind of give you a sense of sort of the change from today to the proposal. So this is the existing plan, the generator, Park Avenue South is on the left, Seventeenth Street's along the, along the bottom of the page. The existing HVAC unit and all the duct work and the cooling tower, as well as the existing bulkhead. And then this is the proposal in plan, right? So again, the glass enclosed structure, sort of hugging the, the bulkhead components, which are back here. The cooling tower will stay in its same position. We're still evaluating whether or not the cooling tower needs to be replaced, but it would be replaced in kind if that does occur. And then the equipment being tucked in behind the wall on the east side, as well as the enlarged bulkhead enclosure over here. In elevation, so this is the, the south elevation, which would be at the Seventeenth Street elevation. This is the existing condition, so you'll see the cooling tower right in here, the existing fan unit right here, the bulkhead that's beyond, and what we're proposing today. So again, sort of a very sort of simple streamlined rooftop addition, glass and metal addition, that again, I think with the sort of sloped shed roof of the enclosure allows for a, for a very sort of simplified form upon the roof, but also to minimize the sightlines of that as well. You'll see here, sort of in the background, the expanded bulkhead back in here. So if I just, if I can go back, okay, you can kind of see back here, this is the existing wall on the north wall. And as proposed, we are not going any higher than that. And we're also maintaining the easterly most wall. So if we go back again, the edge of that wall, which is sort of set back a couple of feet from the Mansard roof itself, is maintained, that same line is, isn't maintained. So we, we didn't want to sort of further encroach on sort of the, the projection of that bulkhead. The comparison here of the Park Avenue South elevation, so on the left is existing, on the right is as proposed. And again, sort of the generator being relocated. What you'll see here is the glass enclosure, sort of wrapping the bulkhead. You'll also notice that the glass enclosures are set back from the parapet. So it's actually set back about eight feet from the parapet wall along Seventeenth Street, as compared to the existing mechanical equipment, which is actually just a couple of feet behind the sign. And then the elevation, the east elevation, so this is if you were to view it sort of from, from the east, from Irving Place, let's say. And you'll see the, the expansion in height of the, the bulkhead, matching the line of the existing northerly wall and the south, southern extension of that same bulkhead. We would be matching the same materiality that's there today, which is a standing seam copper. So we'll do a pre-patinated copper standing seam to match the same finishes that are up there on the roof today. We have a couple of slides of what this rooftop enclosure would look like. So it is a prefabricated system. So it's a system that we would be, be ordering and installing. And this section here kind of shows sort of the, the basic geometry of it. So it's literally sort of an L-shaped piece that's about seven feet wide and it just sort of leans to up against the bulkhead. And elements of these panels can open up and nest onto each other. So that we thought was really sort of a nice feature of, of this enclosure. So these two panels could nest over here and open up. And these four panels can all nest and open up as well. In terms of the materiality, the, the framing is in a powder coated aluminum framing. We are proposing a medium bronze color to match the, and work with the copper, the pre-patinated copper on the roof. The walls will be a one-inch clear IGU glass unit. And the roof will have a one-inch polycarbonate roof, so that there's a little bit of diffusion of the light coming in from the structure. So we did a few sightline studies, just to show what you would actually see, given how visible this building is. A mockup was installed and I think it's still up right now. And if I just draw your attention to the southwest corner, this was what was mocked up, all the elements in red. So we mocked up the bulkhead expansion, the expansion to the stair and elevator bulkhead, as well as the sort of overall outline of the glass enclosure in red for here. And what we've done is a series of side-by-sides. So this is the view sort of from the farmer's market on roughly Sixteenth Street, looking back towards the building. On the left is an existing photo, but from that vantage point, on the middle would be any rendered simulation of what you would see. And on the right would be the photo showing the mockup. It, it so happens that in this view, you don't see anything today or as, as proposed. So there's actually really no change in any of these photos. If we take a walk further south towards Fifteenth Street and Park Avenue South, looking north towards the building, you can start to see, you know, a little bit of a differentiation between what's there today and what is being proposed. So currently you do see, I can, I don't think I can zoom in here. Okay. Zoom a little bit. So you'll see the cooling tower, the HVAC unit right behind the W and the U. And with the proposal, of course, this piece of equipment goes away and you don't see the enclosure from this vantage point. So it actually kind of cleans up the view behind the sign, which we thought was a, a nice feature. If we move further south, so now we are actually between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street on Broadway, looking back up towards the building, before the building kind of gets obscured by the buildings on, on, on Broadway. You can see the existing condition, which is includes the, the cooling tower, the HVAC equipment. And also back in here, that's actually the bulkhead beyond. So that's the elevator bulkheads that currently exist beyond. And then what is being proposed, so if I zoom in a little bit here, so that you can kind of see a little bit better. Okay, so here we are. So you'll see in gray here, this is the, the glass enclosure that you can kind of see poking up a little bit there below the sign. But behind that is the elevator bulkhead as well. So everything that you see here is sort of within the sightline of what you would otherwise see. And that's sort of proven out by the, the mockup photo right here. So this orange panel here is actually the end of the eastern end of the glass enclosed structure, which is this panel right in here. So you will see a little bit from, I guess, four blocks away. But I think you would see less than what is there today, as well as a more streamlined look up on the roof. Zoom back out. Okay. So this is the view from the east. So if we are on Irving Place, looking west, you'll see the, basically only change here is the expanded bulkhead. So we've taken the bulkhead and we have increased its height and we matched the existing northerly wall, the northernly masonry wall. And we've expanded it westward to be able to house the entire generator component. And the size of it is shown here in the mockup as well. And then I think the last view that you actually do see a difference is this view here, which is on the west side of Union Square and Fifteenth Street, looking back on the corner. So today you would see the cooling tower, the HVAC equipment, as well as part of the generator poking up. And as proposed, of course, all of that stuff on the corner goes away. You do see a slight amount of the enclosure sort of poking up along the Park Avenue side, so, south of it. And you can see that sort of proven out in the mockup as well. And then we went around the rest, around the other streets as well. But none of these views that we're going to show you now actually changed from before and after. But I also kind of skipped through them rather quickly. This is a view from Broadway, looking eastward, back towards the building. The next view is from Park Avenue South, looking south from Eighteenth Street, looking back. And again, there's, there's no change before or after. And then, of course, sort of the, the direct sightline views because of the Mansard roof and the configuration, you, you don't, there's, there's no difference in there either. So, you know, with that, you know, we're really pleased and really excited about this, this proposal and kind of marrying the, the dual realities of trying to figure out how to get this building up to snuff in terms of today's codes and sort of requirements, but also, you know, creating some outdoor space and rooftop access, which I think for us is very important as architects and especially important in today's environment. So we hope that what we, what we posed here is rational and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? I think it was a very detailed and thorough presentation. So we may not have questions just yet. All right, not seeing any hands. I think we'll turn and to testimony. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to see if we have anyone signed up or here to speak. Lisa?
Yes, we don't have anybody signed up to speak and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thanks. Rich, have we received any written testimony on this item?
We have received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board Five recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I also want to just note for the record that Commissioner Bland is recused on this item and has been absent from the meeting from the beginning of this presentation. And Commissioner Chen has also had to step out for another meeting, so he has not been present for this item either. Okay, commissioners, any final questions? Okay, I think we will go ahead and move into our discussion. And I'm starting to unmute all of you, so look for the request on your screen and accept it. And I think, you know, in many ways, this is an application of sort of a substitute rooftop accretions, features. And I think in many ways, in many of the views, the substitution is much less visible than the existing condition. So I think that's positive. There is some minimal visibility. And then obviously over the Irving, from Irving Place, over what is a designed facade, but not the sort of primary view facade, it does get a little more visible, the bulkhead. So any thoughts on this? Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to start?
Yeah, sure. You know, first of all, I want to thank the applicant for a, for a very concise and, and specific presentation. Often, you know, I, I sort of feel like I'm, the, the true visibility is being obscured to me. And here, you know, we really zoomed in on it and gave me the ability to see exactly what it was that was changing. And, and I, I think this is perfectly acceptable and appropriate. The, you know, the visibility is minimal for most angles, except perhaps the east. And, and it's part of a roof scape that's been this way with a lot of mechanicals, et cetera, for a long, long time. And it's not really changing for the worse, and in some ways it's changing for the better. And activating this roof is, is, you know, also I enjoyed the fact that they showed us other ways in which rooftops were typically activated, not today, but back, back then. And so this, you know, conforms to that expectation as well.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm in agreement with everything that Commissioner Gustafson just said. I think this is absolutely appropriate and a good cleanup for what's there now.
Great, great. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. My initial concern had been the, the increased visibility of the stair bulkhead. But I think it's the benefit of hiding the generator and cleaning up the roof makes it, makes a good trade-off. So I think it's perfectly appropriate as it is.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with the remarks of previous commissioners. And I think this is a well-designed solution and actually has less negative impact on visibility. I can definitely approve it.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Commissioner Devonshire?
If, if I may, Sarah, our firm did, this is truly a magnificent and monumental roof. Our firm restored this roof in the 1990s. And, and to give you an idea of the scale, each of those little blips on the parapet at the top are flame finials. And each of those is three feet high. They're, and they're made up of 16 different stampings. And, and because Guardian Life at that time wanted the project done so fast, we couldn't get it done by the one company in the country who could do things, WF Norman. We hired a company in New Jersey that essentially did repusse work, doing a lot of the, the, the stamping and hammering by hand. I mean, it is, it was an amazing job. I have always been surprised that the W Hotel hadn't put an addition up on this thing. Because it really, it's almost the size of a football field up there. It's, it's monstrous. In any case, I'm totally in favor of, of this. And it's just one more beautiful thing on, to, to me, what is my favorite roof in, in New York City. So thumbs up.
That's great, thank you. It's great to have those personal experiences and personal knowledge.
It was magnificent to, to work on this thing.
Great, all right. And Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Okay, all right. So I think we have a consensus here. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you read the motion?
In the matter of LPC 21-01179201 Park Avenue South, the Germania Life Insurance Building and Individual Landmark, the application is to install a rooftop addition, bulkheads and mechanical equipment. The, I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features of the roof, that the relocation upgrade and consolidation of existing rooftop mechanical equipment, which will bring the building up to code requirements, will simplify the building's roof scape and reduce visibility of mechanical equipment when looking north, that the bulkheads will be clad with materials such as copper and light colored metal, which will harmonize with the building's material and color palette. And historically and currently, the building featured numerous highly visible accretions, including a neon sign on a metal armature, large bulkheads and other equipment visible from many angles. And that the proposed alterations, including enlarging an existing bulkhead, relocating mechanicals and installing a seasonal greenhouse structure, are in keeping with the history of changes on this complex roof scape. That the expanded bulkhead will be mainly visible from the east and will not be visible from Park Avenue or Union Square Park, which are the most prominent building views. That the greenhouse structure, which while partially visible from the south, will replace existing visible mechanical equipment and will be seen behind and in conjunction with the massive sign armature, and therefore will not call undue attention to itself. But the presence of these visible rooftop accretions are minimal in scale compared to the large building. And given the presence of the historic sign and bulkheads, they will not call undue attention to themselves. But there's a long history of rooftop gardens on hotel buildings throughout the city. And while the building was originally built as an office tower, it was later adapted to become a hotel. And the greenhouse structure and viewing platform supports the activation of the roof in a manner consistent with traditional rooftop hotel amenities. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the landmark.
Do Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
She's muted.
Second.
Okay. And thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
I?
Commissioner Bland? So he's recused, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Baron? Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire? Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
That's approved, thank you. And we will now move to our public hearing agenda for the Preservation Department.
The first item on the public hearing agenda is item number one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, docket number 21-01765, 135 Plymouth Street, also known as 1215 Adams Street and 2 through 10 John Street in the Dumbo Historic District. For Brooklyn Block 18 Lot 1, a Romanesque revival-style factory building designed by William B. Tubby and built in 1891, and a component of 135 Plymouth Street, a factory complex occupying the entire block, consisting of three attached buildings built between 1879 and 1904. The application is to install signage.
And commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please unmute yourselves and state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Morning. Can everyone hear me? Good. Good morning. My name is Sonia Covington. I'm with Brooklyn Public Library. I'm the Director of Capitol Planning. And I'm just here to present our library that's going to be proposed at 135 Plymouth. We're at the ground floor of that building, and this is a presentation of the signage. This branch comes out of our expansion in downtown Brooklyn. We have a renovation going on in Brooklyn Heights, another branch at the Walt Whitman. And this branch will service an area that's currently not serviced by its own library, which is the Dumbo Farragut Brooklyn Navy Yard area. And with that, I hand it over to Dan Wood, the Architect, Principal of Work AC.
Thank you. Hello, commissioners and everyone else. Very excited to come and present this relatively small project. I'm here as a principal of Work AC, and we are working in collaboration with Link by Air, which is a graphic design firm on this project. This is the situation. This is not only serving a community that doesn't have access to a library right now, but it's also going to be the first new branch in the Brooklyn Public Library system to open in more than 30 years since 1983. So it's really an important moment and a really important project for us and for BPL. It's located, this is as Dumbo as Dumbo can get. It is literally down under the Manhattan Bridge overpass. And as Sonia mentioned, it is designed to represent three distinct communities, really the Vinegar Hill, Brooklyn Navy Yards area, Farragut Houses in yellow here, and Dumbo, which is in green. And as a result, you know, we wanted to make sure that this branch library was really open to all and as a library should be, a truly public space for all members of the community and to reach out to people who might not otherwise think this is in their community to really make sure that we're not just addressing Dumbo, but really embracing, which is where the library is, but really embracing all the communities and really work to make sure this is a visible, vibrant, public, open institution for this neighborhood. So the design that we came up with after working in close collaboration with the community members and our community engagement efforts, I won't go too into it, but it's essentially adult and teen spaces wrapping around a central core of a community room, a large flexible community room, and a large children's area in orange in the middle. And all the different programmatic elements were really worked out and discussed in these community engagement meetings. And this shows the inside. As a side note, you know, this is a really interesting factory building with years of accretion of history. And even on the inside, we're maintaining the existing brick and also some of the paint that's on the brick and the existing wood ceilings, we were able to get a dispensation from DOB to classify this as a heavy timber structure, which meant that we didn't have to add fireproofing. And you'll actually see the old wooden beams and wooden ceiling through these cutouts. So this idea of visibility is very important on the inside, but it's also very important on the outside. It has an amazing site with all these windows that look out onto Brooklyn Bridge Park and out to Manhattan and down under the bridge. And, you know, the building sticks out so that it does have this, it has no buildings in front of it at the portion that's dedicated to the library, as you see here. However, it is a bit of a, you know, a smaller building in the district. And it's really, in a way, overshadowed by, literally overshadowed by the bridge. You see the shadow here, but also by its neighbors. So while it has this kind of strong presence on its site, it's also strangely anonymous. It's also an enormous building, as mentioned by the beginning. It's a full block, it's three buildings put together, it's very heavy brick, dark brick, kind of Teutonic brick. And it will have a number of tenants at the ground floor, of which the library will just be one. So it also has this kind of anonymous character within the building itself, just because it's such a large building and we are a small part of this ground floor. And so we really wanted to kind of create what we call a beacon, you know, and to utilize, you know, what we've seen in the city as kind of these historic beacons to draw people to important parts of infrastructure and public. And inside the building, we're doing that through these kind of hanging beacons that utilize the transparency through the project to identify the different areas in very generic terms. This is for teens, this is for books, this is info, et cetera. And on the outside, we wanted to do something similar, a kind of marquee moment, where this building would kind of announce itself as a new public institution for the city in a very vibrant way that really, you know, calls attention to itself. So when we looked around the district, we saw, this is the building itself in 1915, shortly after completion, when it was the Bliss Company. And you see that it's characterized by this very large graphics for the Bliss Company, both on the building itself in two different locations and on the water towers in this image. Later, when this became the Wearing Envelope Company, there's also still existing moments of signage on the building. And, you know, I think it's important to realize that these were not just billboards, but by being directly on the building, were also important ways for people to identify the building within the city. So they're more like a wayfinding or a sign as much as it is advertising or billboard. And you see this all throughout this district. So this district is, in a way, unique because of all the old factory buildings, many of which still retain this kind of signage. So this is the Thompson Meter Company building, the Sweeney Manufacturing Company building had it in Dumbo, the Brillo factory, Pure Luxe Paints, which also appears to be Pure Less Paints. So there, they have two names on the building, I noticed. And then, of course, most famously in the district, the Eagle Warehouse building with its very, very large sign, both at the top and around the arch at the base. And I just want to point out that within the Dumbo District, this idea of kind of direct painting on the building itself has been utilized by retail tenants to identify. This is Empire Stores, which was approved by landmarks previously. So what we are proposing is to put the word "library" in a very large and very vibrant way on the building to announce the entrance and to do this on Adams Street so that it really emphasizes our entrance. I forgot to mention, but we are also sharing an entrance with a retail tenant to the right. So we really want to emphasize that this is the library, this is for you. And to use not, you know, not a trade name or not a specific name, but a really a very generic word that resonates so deeply with so many people, "library", to identify this as a public institution and something that's really new and vibrant for the community. And we're doing that both through paint and a kind of graphic, a dot pattern, a frit pattern on the windows. So you'll read the letters through the windows, it'll be white on the outside, black on the inside. So you'll be able to see still very clearly through the windows from the inside. And here you see it, we also are proposing a small sign, changeable sign with the hours next to the door, identifying the specific branch. And I do want to point out that this building, the ground floor currently is painted. So while the bricks, the existing brick is exposed above the ground floor, the ground floor is painted, it's not only painted, it's painted in kind of an ugly color, which has been patched and changed throughout time. So originally, we were thinking we would just kind of add another layer of history. But I think the paint is in such bad shape that what we are going to, what we are proposing is to repaint the ground floor in a more sympathetic and nice color and then to add the white paint on top. Which, of course, all of this will be removable. So at some point in the future, if things change. So we're proposing Navajo Red, which is a nice orangy red. The interior, as you remember, has these orange elements. It also resonates really well with that dark brick. But we didn't want to go as dark as the brick. We do want to make sure that it's clear that this is new and this is different from what's above. And then here you see the perforated material that we're proposing and the white paint. You're just going to have to imagine it's white. And on, just going over to the John Street side here in this image, you see that we are going to put the more traditional Brooklyn Public Library sign there to kind of, you know, not to make a big deal, but maybe draw people if they're coming from the north around the building to Adams Street, where they will see how to get in. I should point out that the windows and everything like that, the window replacement, were all part of a previous application approved and already installed, as well as that handicap ramp and things like that. So we're really just looking at the signage elements. And this will be very typical mounted letters offset from the building. And these are the two facades. So that's our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, not seeing any hands raised.
I see one.
Hi, sorry about that. Just a quick question. Is there any coordination or planning with how this facade treatment's going to relate to the rest of the bottom of the building?
Right now, we don't know who the tenant will be. For example, in this rendering, you see the change. We do want to kind of make sure that our side is emphasized, but I would imagine when a tenant is chosen, we could coordinate with them to make sure that the paint is consistent.
At this time, the landlord doesn't have a tenant lined up for that space.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes, I have two questions. One has to do with, if you could help me out, on page 25. If you go to page 25?
Sure, yeah, if I can. Yep. Oh, it's the same image.
Yeah, and then go to page 23. I'm looking at the left-hand side, and the windows have square heads on the top. And it looks like there's some kind of cornice, but I'm not sure. And then go to page 25. And they're rounded corners. Are you changing the window heads?
We are not changing anything with the windows. That is interesting. Sorry about that. We're not changing anything with the windows.
Oh, go to the...
So sorry about that. I don't know why they got rounded. I think they were originally rounded. Is that true, Troy?
I think it's because they're rounded on the interior of the space and it's supposed to be flat on the outside.
Okay, so that's just...
My apologies. That is not a proposed change. We weren't trying to sneak that through, are you?
The second issue is, I like the project and I think the scale is nice. The Brooklyn Public Library, the scale is so different from the big one. Is it just contrast or should it be larger?
We like the contrast. We just want to make sure that it's clear where the entrance is. Because I do feel it could be, you know, we want to make a big deal at the entrance side, but give a little hint as people come around the corner. That is the idea. And we looked at several different sizes and felt that this is, you know, it's still going to have a presence on the street because of the conflict in color. But, you know, we felt this was the appropriate size.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, not seeing any hands. We'll move to testimony. And if you are in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance. So I'll turn it over to Lisa to walk us through that.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. We had one person sign up and one person with a hand raised. That's Doreen Gallo. So Doreen, I've just brought you in. You just need to unmute yourselves. Turn on camera if you choose and please state your name for the record.
Hi, I am Dorian Gallo. Good morning, Chair Carroll, Commissioners, Lisa. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding the signage for our new library on behalf of the Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance. We're very involved and very excited about the library. Our committee has reviewed the proposal, and we support the signage proposed for the John Street side of the building. As far as the bold stark white library sign on Adams Street, we would like to see something more scaled back. The applicant refers in his proposal to the neighborhood context for the proposed painted signage on Adams Street and gives examples of what they call painted supergraphics. And in the presentation today, two of the buildings cited are in the Fulton Ferry Historic District. The Empire Stores and the Eagle Warehouse are not in the Dumbo Historic District. We believe that this approach is problematic. Historically, if the signage was stark white, it was against the brick of the building, not white paint on rust-colored brick paint, which was more stark. More often than not, is on the corner of this building, where there's a great example of the Wearing Envelope signage. The white lettering is on black painted background. The facade of this building with the bold white painted library sign faces the Manhattan Bridge, Bridge Park, the river, and the once Belgium Rock streetscape that has now been destroyed and brings too much attention to its graphics over the building. The Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance urges LPC to scale back the painted signage on Adams Street. And we would prefer that some version of the library sign be painted above the windows, more in keeping with the historic signage in the district. We also are concerned that the Wearing Envelope sign is going to be scrubbed from this building. We want to see that it is retained. I reached out to the designers, but I have not heard back on this issue yet. This is a cornerstone building on the river on a boundary of our historic district. The proposal, although painted seemingly temporary, will define this facade rather than enhance it. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Doreen. And with that, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Rich, have we received any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board to recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. Dan, would you like to respond to the comments? Please.
Sure, right. I understand, I think, well, first of all, the Wearing Envelope, we don't, that's not in our purview. But, you know, we are, this landlord is great. I actually had a studio in this building in the early 1990s, which, so it's a really important building to me. And I've loved Dumbo since I moved there in 1989. And so, and this building has changed a lot. So I do think, you know, the landlord would be open to that. So regarding the scale, you know, this is a public, this is not a commercial project, and it's a public project. And I think we really want to make sure that this is something for everyone and that the word "library" is, you know, it's not, for me, seeing the word "library" usually brings a warm feeling to people's hearts. I think this is an enormous building, it's a full block. And I think within the context of that, this large supergraphic is not perhaps as large as when you zoom in on these. It's also, you know, it's in this crazy place with the bridge and the noise of the trains passing overhead. It's not a, it's a very kind of urban situation. And there are huge new commercial buildings, you know, luxury condos and things, much bigger than our building. I do think that within the context of this corner, a big word library that's really trying to bring people in from not just Dumbo, you know, but really the communities to make sure that this is truly a public space for everyone and to really be inviting, it's meant to be inviting, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any final questions? Okay, not... Okay, not seeing any questions. I'm going to start to unmute you all so we can close the hearing and move into our discussion. So Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And I want to thank the applicants for their presentation. And, and I think, and I want to thank Dorian Gallo for her testimony. And we've heard a response about the size of this sign on the entrance facade and, and the public nature of this adaptive reuse. So I think that'll factor into our discussion as we move along. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one, since you were engaged with questions?
Sure, sure. I like the project. I, I think because of the scale of the building, the super graphic is fine. I think at the pedestrian level, it would work very well. I, I think it's inventive. And I think the Brooklyn Public Library could be a bit bigger, but that's not important. I think it, it works well, and I think the super graphic in relationship to the windows, it's, it's interesting, and I would accept it.
Okay, great. And I'm going to go the other way to sort of near resident Commissioner, Commissioner Bland.
A near resident, right. You know, a typical library from time immemorial expresses itself in its public role through its architecture, columns, you know, Art Deco, whatever it is, it's, it's always expressed as a public, important building. This library, this building can't do that. It, it's, it is assumed into this larger factory building. So, so I think the applicant has made a terrific case for making this public and visible and welcoming to all, and not just the immediately surrounding community. I, I bought into all of that argument completely. And I think that the super graphic is a fabulous and creative way of doing it. It's, 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 it's inspired by somewhat smaller, but nonetheless, painted signs on the building itself. So I think all of this is terrific. At first, I wondered whether the windows really needed the, the dot pattern, but I think, I think even that creates a, a very interesting effect and helps, helps explain the whole notion of this, of the super graphic. So I'm, I'm not only in support of it, I, I really applaud it. I think it's a terrific idea, as a matter of fact.
Commissioner Devonshire.
I, I unfortunately differ here. I love everything about the project. The, the super graphic, I feel, the, my initial fear of it is that the next thing that we'll have is a North Face justifying, doing a similar thing on another similar building in a, in a district and using this as their precedent, which strikes fear into me. I, I don't feel that the super graphic is going to be the thing that pulls people to this building. I think they're, they're going to be here looking for the library. And so I think another form of signage, rethought signage, would, would do the same thing. It's just too much on, on this building.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum.
There you go, then. I, I think, I think, first of all, I think that Robert Venturi is smiling. This is, it's so interesting how, how integrated into the architectural vocabulary his thinking and philosophy, ideas have become that it's, you know, matter of course. I think that's interesting. I, I have no objection to the, the painted lettering. I think it is appropriate in the district, and, and it's been shown to be a feature of the district and of this building. I, I do think that, that the, the, if you go to page 12 of 30, though, the, the one thing that the applicant, that the application package lacked is, I'm, I'm actually looking at the image of the entire building with BPL arrow. There it is. If you look at that, what I think is going to happen here is that, is that, that, that sign, the library sign in the orange paint, is going to come right up to the underside of the Wearing Envelope sign. And that makes me think that the suggestion of one of the, one of the speakers was a good one, to consider using the black back backdrop instead of the terracotta color, because I think it will be more or less contiguous with that. And I think the relationship between this new sign and that preserved existing sign would be stronger with the black base. I would also suggest that the, you know, we, we kind of log this with the building and, and that, you know, because it is a painted base already, that we, it would be in the, it would be in the landlord's interest to have a master plan for the storefronts so that Michael's concern would be allayed.
And Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with Commissioner Jefferson and Commissioner Bland. I think it's an inventive way to express this public facility. And I think that in the context of the size of this building and the surrounding buildings that I can really find this appropriate, and I think it's a creative solution. I really like the way the overpainting works with the windows as an expression of the library. So I could, I could approve it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree with Commissioner Chapin and previous Commissioners who were in favor of the super graphics. I think it's a very inventive way to draw attention to the library, the location. And Commissioner Goldblum was concerned about the Wearing Paint, I mean, the Wearing Envelope painted sign. I believe that's on the opposite corner and not on the same corner as the library. I agree that it should be maintained, but I think it's, it's on the other side of the, of the building. So I'm in favor of the application.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think that the super graphic is an appropriate interpretation of the precedent. And so while I might have been concerned, as Commissioner Devonshire is about its future precedent for commercial use, there's enough there that I think in the, both in the district and in the surrounding area, to make it be appropriate and approvable. I just do think that it is interesting also that this is, that we are in a new kind of time for libraries, that they've redefined themselves as kind of vital, once again, vital actors in a, in, in communities. What I find strange and, and maybe troubling, but maybe this is the expression of the, of in fact, the transformation and the adaptive reuse of the, of, of the type, is the absence of the word "public," other than the fact that it's on the little sign on the other side. And that was, you know, the public aspect of library was such an important piece. And the question for me is whether or not it's sort of embedded, assumed, or whether that word has lost its, its, its meaning, its, its, its kind of, you know, the way that it is understood. And I, and I, and I wonder about that now, especially, but as I see this. So on some levels, it's sort of the, the use of the commercial method of advertising of what, you know, the, the, the activity, in this case, is sort of suits the kind of, in, in a sense, the transformation of the, of, of the ways that libraries are being used, the fact that people are in there, you know, online and, and using it in different ways. So I, I think on lots of levels, this is, this makes sense. It's complicated, but it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, I'm, I'm truly torn about this one. The, I, I like the super graphic in this situation, and I think it's a very unique situation, you know, particularly the location of the building, the type of building that it is, the, the massing of the building, the, the, the public use of the building, and then all those things weigh in favor of it. I, you know, I could just imagine if this was, instead of being a library, if that's, if the exact same building, it was proposed that the sign say "Google" or something like that, I, you know, I, I have a feeling that we would have a different reaction. So based on its, its, its use and its, and the peculiar situation and uniqueness, I, I'll, I, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, but I'm, I'm barely there, and I am concerned.
Okay, so I also, you know, in this case, find that, given the size of the building, the sort of massing of it, the four different sides of it, that the signage on this one side, based on the historic commercial precedence, is appropriate. But I do hear people's concerns about the size of this. And I think that, well, you know, I think many of us are persuaded because of the adaptive reuse, particularly for public use. And while we can't factor in use, I think that we can note that for the record, you know, future applications would be considered very strictly on their own site conditions. But in this case, I, I would support this, and I think that brings us to seven, six or seven. So I think we should maybe make a motion and call the vote and see where we are. So Commissioner Jefferson, do you have the motion in front of you? Would you be able to make that?
Oh, yes, I think I, I do. In a matter of LPC-21-01765-135 Plymouth Street, AK-115 Adam Street and 2-10 John Street, a Romanesque style revival style factory building designed by William B. Tubby and built in 1891, and a component of 135 Plymouth Street, a factory complex comprised by the entire block consisting of three attached buildings, 1879 and 1904, applicable historic I note that the building's style, scale, and material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historical character of the Dumbo Historic District. I recommend approval, like finding that the base of the building is presently painted and was painted at the time of designation. Therefore, the application of painted, painted signage on the facade will not damage or obscure any significant architectural or historical features of, and it is reversible, that this building and many other buildings in this historic district, typical features, large painted signs, advertising manufacturing, and commercial uses within, and that the proposed large graphic covering the building base is in keeping with that tradition for a major tenant, that the pattern, vinyl signage at the window, which will be installed in conjunction with the painted signage, will not obscure transparency, that the proposed pin-mounted lettering above the first floor windows appropriate the location of a corner signage, that given the building's monumental quality, the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the building, that the building, that the proposed work is supportive of the adaptive reuse of the portion of this warehouse building as a library, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historical character of the Dumbo Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I'll second it.
And Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
True, thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
All right, the next item is item number two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 20-09034-611, Second Street in the Park Slope Historic District, block 1077, lot 55, an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Eisenlaw and Carlson and built in 1908. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions.
And the applicant has joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Is the applicant with us?
Yes, Mr. Lipton, if you could just unmute yourself and just click on the screen to advance the slides. Please state your name for the record, and you can begin the presentation.
Yeah?
Okay, Mr. Lipton, you're, you're muted. There you go.
Can you unmute it? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, everybody. This application is on 611 Second Street between Eighth Avenue and Prospect Park West. It's in a proposed second-floor extension above the existing kitchen extension and a penthouse roof extension as well. The, this is the historic district, which you're all familiar with, the Park Slope Historic District, where this black dot is, is our, the project in question. These are the existing rooftop from the rear of the house. As you can see, the project is here, and there's an adjacent penthouse directly to the right. On the second floor, which is the extension we're, we're asking for, there's also an extension to the left, adjacent to this property. Here's some existing photos of the existing extension, which we're proposing to build above this extension onto the second level. This is the existing rooftop showing the wall of the existing penthouse directly to our, to the left and what our rooftop looks like. Here you can see a block diagram showing most of the buildings upon this, a four-story in pink, three-story, and the existing penthouse here, which we're building directly to the right of that. That is what the proposal is. This is the front facade of the building, which will not change. We're not affecting the front facade of the building, showing the hide envelope, which we're far below, as you can see on, on the model on the right. This is the back of the building, showing the extension on the second floor here and the penthouse, the penthouse extension upon. The existing extension on the rooftop is to the right, and the existing extension on the second floor is to our left. This model shows the existing building with the rooftop extension to our left that we spoke about and the new proposed addition, which we, we would like to review. This is a similar slide from the rear, showing the existing, with the modeling of the existing extension here and the new extensions on the second level as well as the penthouse. These are, these are the elevations, architectural elevations, showing again the second-story extension and the penthouse roof extension. showing again the second story extension and the penthouse roof extension. The section shows the, uh, person across the street and the sightline, which you'll see in the mockups and the, with the, uh, penthouse being here, uh, approximately thirty feet back from the front of the building. Again, section, site plan and some, uh, soundboard maps and block diagrams. These are the plans of, uh, the building, showing the hatched area as the extension above the existing, uh, kitchen extension, which is here. We set back an additional five feet so that we maintain our thirty-foot rear yard requirement and the penthouse extension as well, uh, shown here. The adjacent, uh, penthouse is much closer to the street. We set back about thirty feet from, from the front facade. This is a, a, a key plan showing the photos that we took, um, showing the, the mockups. Here's some photos of the mockups that, that were built on the roof. And these are the photos showing that, uh, with the mockup in place, the, uh, penthouse roof extension cannot be visible from any thoroughfare public thoroughfare. This is Second Street looking northwest with the mockup in place. This is from the corner of Second and Eighth Avenue. This is from the other side on Prospect Park West, looking, looking west. And this is from Prospect Park West, uh, again, looking west from the middle of the street. And if you have any questions, they might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we'll move to testimony. And if anyone is in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Lisa to walk us through the testimony.
Okay, we had one person sign up, uh, Kelly Carroll. And Kelly, I'm bringing you over.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. Um, I just do want to say I wrote this before the drawings were updated. So I, I was looking at an earlier drawing set, which didn't show all of the visibility. So with that in mind, um, while we believe the rooftop will not be visible, HTC would like to see a more complete application submitted, particularly one with the zoomed visibility studies. This block's donut is nearly pristine and we were not convinced by the next door neighbor's pre-designation rear addition as an adequate precedent to construct one at this location. We ask that the commission evaluate both additions cumulative effect on this block. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Um, and there was nobody else that signed up to speak.
All right, and Rich, did we receive any written testimony?
Yes, we do have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board, six recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Lipton, would you like to respond to the comments?
Um, no, I, I, I appreciate the comment, but, um, this, this addition will again not be visible from the public thoroughfare. There is existing addition directly to, uh, the west of, of the building and, um, basically the second floor extension also has the, uh, addition to, to the right of it. So, uh, I don't think this will affect the donut whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, if there are no final questions, we'll move to close the hearing. So I am, um, unmuting and requesting to unmute some of you or all of you at this point, so that we can, um, close the hearing. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. All right, so, um, we have an application here for, uh, top and a rear yard addition. So we are looking at the cumulative effect. The applicant has shown similar additions, both in terms of height projection and, um, scale on the roof in, within this particular block. So why don't we go ahead and start our discussion? And, uh, so Commissioner Bland, would you like to start this one?
Sure. No, there's no visibility from the public way. Everything they're doing in the back, a neighbor has done on either side of them, uh, already. Um, I think this is relatively modest and to, and to what we often approve, uh, in, in relation to what we often approve, so I can support it as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
I supported it.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yep, I agree, appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, appropriate.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree.
Commissioner Chapin.
I agree.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Yes, I, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna agree. I, I think their, their visibility is not the only standard and, and this is a nearly pristine block, uh, with almost no rooftop additions. I would not have supported it.
Commissioner Devonshire.
I think it's a reasonable size addition, I can approve it.
And Commissioner Chen. I don't.
Yeah, I agree with the commissioners, fellow commissioners, uh, is rather modest and we have approved these in the past.
Thank you. All right, great. So I think we have a consensus for approval and, um, I'm going to, uh, let's see. I know Commissioner Bland, you don't have the motion in front of you. So I'm gonna see if Commissioner Devonshire, would you read this motion?
Sure.
Matter of six eleven Second Street in the Park Slope Historic District, an application to construct rooftop and rear yard additions. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or conceal any significant historic fabric, that the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facade and will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. That the rear chimneys will maintain their existing height, which matches a consistent pattern seen throughout the row and only the metal chimney flues will be extended the minimum height required for, by building code. That the one-story rear addition on top of an existing alley is in keeping with the height of similar two-story rear additions seen throughout the block. That the rear addition will be set back from the rear edge of the existing rear extension, will be clad with brick to match the existing facade and will not be visible from any public thoroughfares. That the cumulative effect of the rooftop and rear additions will not overwhelm the rowhouse and the work will not diminish the special architectural historic character of the Park Slope Historic District.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I will second it.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen, who is back.
Aye, thank you.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. I think. Commissioner Goldblum, are you?
No.
No. Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that's approved and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
The next item is item number three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number two one dash oh one three two four, six hundred Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, block five eleven lot sixteen. A store building designed by Samuel A. Warner and built in eighteen eighty-three to eighty-four. The application is to modify storefront infill and install signage.
And commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please unmute yourself and, uh, you may begin.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good morning, I'm Julie Rosen from Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. Six hun- excuse me, sorry, it's a going a little fast, there we go. Um, six hundred Broadway is a six-story store and loft building that runs through block from Broadway to Crosby Street just south of Houston in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The middle image shows the Broadway facade, which is the primary facade and contains the retail entry at the ground floor. And the right image is of the Crosby Street facade, which contains service functions at the ground floor. Target has leased the ground floor retail space and will be undertaking repair and restoration work at both Broadway and Crosby Street, as well as introducing signage at Broadway and a bay of new infill on Crosby Street. The full scope of work is shown on this slide so that you can see what the entire project entails, but there are only two specific items that require commission level review. There's an illuminated sign at the retail entrance store transom on Broadway, which you can see in the upper right, and the installation of an additional service door on Crosby at the lower right. Here we have just a couple of existing photos of the Broadway retail frontage with a detailed view of the historic sign band where new signage meeting staff level rules will be installed. And a couple of existing photos of the Broadway retail entry doors and transom, where the illuminated bullseye sign will be installed. Just a couple of additional photos showing the Crosby Street service frontage, which contains historic metal shutters and bolt light steps, both of which will be repaired and restored. At the left is a detailed photo of the Southernmost Bay, which will become a new service door. The existing infill and bulkhead grill are not historic. The historic cast iron sill shown in the center photo will be salvaged and incorporated into the new door design. The photo at right shows the existing metal shutters and the new service door will match this historic paneling. Retailers in Soho historically advertise their goods with a variety of signage types. This photo from eighteen ninety shows the bracket and panel signs that were historically on six hundred Broadway. And this nineteen thirty-seven view looking down Broadway from Houston reinforces the amount of signage historically on the thoroughfare, as well as the importance of visible signage. Six hundred Broadway is at the near left with the wall advertisement. As early as the nineteen thirties, there was a clear distinction between the primary Broadway facade with its designed facade and variety of signage, which you can see on the right, and the building's simpler rear facade on Crosby Street at left. This distinction between primary and secondary facades remains today. Within the last several years, LPC has approved a variety of illuminated signs along Broadway. A selection of past approvals are shown here. Service doors are a unique typology within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District and buildings in the district feature a variety of door designs and proportions. It's also common for buildings to contain more than one service entry, especially on the rear facades of buildings that run through block from Broadway. Here are four examples on Crosby Street alone. Here's a quick summary of the proposed scope of work on Broadway. And an existing view at left and proposed rendering on the right, which shows the new signage on Broadway. Applied signage at the sign band and illuminated signage at the entrance transom. The signage scope is modestly scaled in comparison to the size of the building and it is consistent with other signage previously approved by LPC. The building is also at the busy intersection of Broadway and Houston as, and is an appropriate location for lit signage. Another view shows the proposed bullseye sign in the transom, which is discreet and located directly above the main entrance for wayfinding. The signage is shown here in context. In getting into some of the details of the signage, uh, the bullseye will be internally illuminated and a two foot six inches in diameter covers only a small portion of the transom window, especially when you consider that the center of the bullseye is open. The sign will be mounted on metal tubes, which will conceal the conduit and they'll be painted black to match the storefront infill. The tubes will then be attached to the wood storefront infill so that no cast iron is penetrated. Moving on to Crosby Street, here's a quick summary of the scope. And an existing view on the left with proposed rendering on the right. The new service door will be installed at the Southernmost Bay at the location of an existing display window. The new doors will have a panel design that matches the historic metal shutters and all other work that you see in this rendering, including the restoration of the existing stairs, will be approved at staff level. The existing service door at the north end of the building is specifically used for the office floors above. In order to provide dedicated loading access for the retail space, the new service door is proposed for the Southernmost Bay and it will be installed in the same plane as the existing display window. In order to provide sufficient clearance for loading, the new door will be eight feet tall. This is necessarily taller than the existing service doors, which have a very low height of only six foot nine and a half inches. But the design of the new doors will be paneled metal so that there is consistency in the treatment of the service doors throughout the facade. The presence of two service doors, the difference in height and the design are all in keeping with precedence throughout the historic district. Here's an enlarged view of the proposed service entry. And existing versus proposed bay elevations. The existing wood window frame will remain in place and it will just be modified to accommodate the installation of the new doors. The bulkhead, which is composed of nonhistoric infill and a nonhistoric grill, will be removed. And to prevent the loss of any historic fabric, the existing cast iron sill will be salvaged and relocated to serve as a lintel above the new doors. Here we just have some planned details for the new paneled metal service doors and a couple of existing and proposed sections as well, so you can better see the detailing and the changes we're proposing. And an overall summary of the proposed scope of work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Commissioner Jefferson, you're muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, you, you say there's, um, that you have a precedent for having a symmetrical facade with two service doors of different proportions. Where is that? Did I miss it?
I can go back to the, the precedent slide. So there's, there's a combination of conditions within the district. Um, let's see. Sorry, there we go. So kind of collectively throughout the district, you see a combination. So on this slide, you can see multiple service doors within a facade in different proportions. And then this was the slide, um, showing a couple of, well, four really Crosby Street examples that have multiple service doors.
True, to, to go back to your proposition. Uh, uh, the elevation, you're drawing elevation again?
Oh, the elevation, sure.
Yeah, of your proposition. Oh, so the two doors, one on the right-hand side is, is smaller than the one on the left-hand side, Jackalik? Yeah, okay.
Correct, yes, the, the service door on the right-hand side is the existing historic door. It's only six foot nine and a half inches tall, which does not provide enough clearance for, for loading. Um, so we're proposing a, an eight-foot high door, um, that does mimic the detailing of the historic doors.
So how many, how do you, how do you deal with handicap on this?
I'm sorry?
How do you deal with the handicap going up the stairs? That's not part of this at all?
That's not part of this application, no. And, and the, the entrance on Broadway is a gray.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, it appears we don't have any other questions for this moment. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to walk us through the public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Okay, we had one person sign up, um, if you have his name, hand up, Pete Davies. Pete, if you could just, um, there you go, unmute yourself, turn on your camera and, um, if you choose, and just please state your name for the record.
Okay, very good, um, my name is Pete Davies, Broadway Residents Coalition in Soho. Uh, I- I stand by the Community Board to resolution to ask you to deny the internally illuminated signage, the bullseye on Broadway. The signage precedents that are shown on page 10. If you'd like to look at that. None of those that exist now are internally illuminated. The Michael Kors sign is gone. That store has changed. That sign is no longer internally illuminated. 611 Broadway is pin lettering, backlit. The 441 Broadway G-Star is illuminated lettering. It is not an internally illuminated sign. And 483 Broadway for TJ Maxx was proposed to be internally illuminated, but the commission rejected that, and that is lit in other ways. So there are no precedents for internally illuminated exterior signs. We have been working very hard over the years to restrict such inappropriate sign to Joan Broadway. The one answer would be for them to, if they insist on an illuminated bullseye, that could be done internally, set back appropriately from the window. But to put that on the exterior in somewhat clumsy manner that it's shown with the various supports is both without precedent and inappropriate for the district. So we ask that the commissioners deny this aspect of the application. Thank you very much.
Lisa, are you muted?
Sorry, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, and Rich, do we have any written testimony?
The only other testimony we received was from the community board.
All right. Julie, would you like to respond to the testimony?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. I just need to move up to the proposal. I'd just like to reiterate that the proposed illuminated bullseye is extremely discreet. It's very modestly scaled, fits very well within the transom over the entry. And it is very important for helping to identify the entrance to the storefront. And we do think it's in keeping with the precedents that have already been set in the district.
Okay, thank you. And maybe Caroline or Mark. Under the rules for staff level approval, the staff can approve a small neon sign in a window, display window or transom. Is that correct, if it's less than 25% of the area?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think in some ways this is along those same lines. Okay. So are there any other final questions, commissioners? All right, so I'm going to start to request that you unmute yourself so that we can make a motion to close the hearing. All right, so please look at your screen so you can accept that. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start on this one?
Sure. I'm going to start with Crosby Street. I think removing that added stair tower will be an improvement to the Crosby Street elevation. So I'm supportive of that. And I think that the asymmetrical new sort of loading dock is appropriate for Crosby Street. And Crosby Street has a very varied group of facades. And I think that, given the width of the building, that you won't really, it won't strike you as being an asymmetrical, as that being an anomaly. So I think that's acceptable. I think that the signage, the sign band on Broadway is fine. I'm not so concerned so much about the illumination of the sign above the door as the large tubes that are going to be holding it in place, which I think, they're not shown in the rendering, they're only shown in the elevation. And I think they will be more noticeable than is depicted here. And so I'm just wondering if perhaps it was put behind the glass that might bring the bullet forward and maybe the aluminum tubes could be behind that. You would be more layered and you wouldn't see it as well. And it might diffuse a little bit of the light.
And then it might actually be very consistent with a neon sign behind the window. Okay, all right.
Sarah, if I can just jump in this, Mark. I just want to correct what I said. It's actually a 15% and not 25% for neon signs in transoms for staff level approval, just so it's clear.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith. I think that most of the changes that are being made are appropriate. I think that perhaps just finding a better way to light, as was suggested by testimony as well, finding a better way to light the logo, you know, on the transom would solve the problem and still permit them to have an illumination. So with that change, I think I could support all the changes that are being made.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with Ann.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Ann as well.
Commissioner Chen?
Me three. I agree with Ann as well.
Commissioner Bland?
Me four.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with Ann as well.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson?
I agree with Ann, but I also want to point out that, you know, we are frequently bombarded with applications from national and international brands that are uncompromising and inflexible and insensitive in their approach to our historic buildings. And strong arguments made to do everything the way they always do it. And so, you know, this is an exemplar for them, which is to say, you know, this is not the way Target would be doing its branding if it was in suburbia. They've adjusted the sizes, et cetera, the frequency of the signage to the historic district. And so I think that should be commended as well.
I agree. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree with that and can approve it as presented.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I think the general consensus is to support it with the recommendation that Commissioner Holford Smith has made. So I'll ask Commissioner Holford Smith to make that motion.
Sure. In the matter of LPC-2101324600 Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a store building designed by Samuel A. Warner and built in 1883-84, the application is to modify storefront infill and install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not eliminate any significant architectural features. And the proposed modifications to the storefront infill of the Crosby Street facade, including removing the bulkhead and modern grill, raising the cast iron sill and installing new metal paneled service doors will be consistent with similar historic and modified storefronts at buildings within the historic district. And the character of Crosby Street as a service street for through-block buildings front and on Broadway supports the presence of multiple service spaces at the ground floor. That the enlarged service door opening is in keeping with the variety of service infill founded buildings of this type, style and age, which did not always align with adjacent storefront infill. That the decorative cast iron sill will be salvaged and reinstalled as a transom bar, thereby maintaining a significant architectural feature and minimizing the loss of historic fabric. That the proposed illuminated signage is well proportioned to the transom and will not call undue attention to itself. And that the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm this through-block building. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. However, I find that the illuminated sign located on the outside of the building with prominent metal framing will be inappropriate and that the applicant should work with staff to find an alternative way to illuminate the sign, perhaps on the interior of the glass.
Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 10 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
We'll move to the next item.
The next item is item number four. Application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan. Docket number 19-39827, 85 Christopher Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, block 619, lot 81. An apartment building with doors designed by W.J. Gesner and built in 1872. The application is to replace windows.
Commissioners, you'll note that the applicants have joined the hearing and staff will be presenting the proposal with the applicants available for questions after.
Great, thank you. And I also want to note that we'll be hearing from Dina Posner, who is one of our preservationists who has been on staff for a while, but this is her very first public hearing. So she is starting her training in doing remote hearings. So we welcome her and welcome this presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. I am Dina Posner for the preservation staff, and I will be presenting this application for 85 Christopher Street. And the applicants are also present to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Let's see. The application is to replace the front facade windows at floors two through six with aluminum clad wood windows. The proposed windows will comply with staff level rules, except for the proposed metal material. If the building was one story higher or a little bit wider, the aluminum clad windows would be permitted at staff level. And the building is part of a row of four buildings as shown in the context photo on the right. The existing windows are modern aluminum replacements and were installed without a permit. These photos show probes with the aluminum panning pulled back, showing the deteriorated and missing underlying wood elements. And these are more photos of those probes. These photos show the existing aluminum windows. The other three properties in this row currently have two-over-two double hung windows, which matches the historic configuration. Two of the buildings have wood windows and one has aluminum windows that were installed without a permit. This slide shows up some of the other neighbors along Christopher Street, showing that there is a variety of building types and window configurations along this block. The historic photos here show this row of four buildings and the historic configuration of two-over-two windows at the upper floors. The proposed front building elevation shows the new windows proposed to match the historic configuration and operation. This slide is only meant to show the proposed brown color, not any details or profiles. These are the existing and proposed window elevations showing the new configuration. And this slide and the next show the existing and proposed window sections. The section drawings have some detail and drafting inaccuracies. The applicants have confirmed that they will continue to work with commission staff to resolve these. However, as I previously noted, the metal clad wood windows will not comply with the staff level rules because of their material. That completes the presentation. And the applicant is also present to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, Dina, I think the presentation was very clear and explained a lot. And that may be why we have no questions at this time. So let's move. So thank you for that. And we'll move to testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand. And I'll turn it over to Lisa now.
Okay, we didn't have anybody sign up for this item. And I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommending denial of the application.
All right. Let's see if the applicant would like to add any, anything. If you're, yes, thank you. Hi, please state your name before you speak. And then if you'd like to add anything or speak to the community board's comments, that would be great.
I'm Stevens Cabora. I'm with PVE Engineering. And I think Dina covered everything, everything that we wanted to go over, so no further.
Okay. Do you want to speak a little bit about the community board?
The community board seemed to be kind of split down the middle about the decision to approve. They thought it was commendable that we were, you know, restoring the original configuration, but they were torn over, you know, whether aluminum clad wood or just original wood was the most appropriate solution.
All right, and I understand from Dina's presentation that you, if approved, you would continue to work with the staff on the details and profiles.
Yes, that's correct. We, so the original shape and configuration is so, it's pretty simple. And so, you know, we think we will be able to match it again, you know, pretty close.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move to close the hearing and Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Moved.
Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. And so this is an application for a building which is, build, apartment building doors built in 1872. And it's sort of borderline, if it were a little bit taller or a little bit wider, it would meet the size requirements that, under the rules, that allow the staff to approve a change in material. And so that's why it's before us today. And it's working out some details. And in this case, they are restoring the original configuration. So the question before us today is really about the material and the finished material of that. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start on this one?
Sure, I don't have any significant objections to it. I think it's appropriate. Use of the alternate material is something we've approved before. The details of such windows are good. I'm glad that they'll work with staff to work on the details.
Commissioner Devonshire?
I am okay with the return to the Sash configuration. I am mildly troubled that the details for the window surrounds, the casing surrounds, which would have been and actually were shown in the photographs, were a flat with a bead and quirk, which is a typical surround for New York City windows of this era. I want to be sure that they are working with staff to replicate that as well, not just the squared off sheet metal pan.
Yes, agreed. Okay, Commissioner Chen?
I'm fine.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
I'm fine with it, as long as they're working with staff to get the final details correct.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm fine with it. The details are important, so working with staff is, I can approve it.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Appropriate. I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Agreed.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree with Commissioner Devonshire that the panning should not be done in aluminum, but it should be the, replicate the original wood brick mold that was there. It's still there, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that, is that what, Commissioner Devonshire, is that what you said? I thought you just meant to make sure you got the bead correct in the aluminum. I thought you just meant to make sure you got the bead correct in the aluminum.
No, the, the brick mold, I think, has to replicate the original wood, and it looked like in, in a couple of those photographs, the wood is still there. Typically, what happens is that, that casing molding rots, the brick mold rots from the bottom up, so the bottom six inches is gone. But there's plenty of detail left so that they can replicate that if they, if they are required to in metal.
Okay, all right, so I think, I just want to make sure I've, I've got this right. So Commissioner Goldblum, I think you were comfortable with the aluminum clad wood as a material we've approved in the past, correct? As long as the details were, match the historic details.
Correct.
Correct, okay, and Commissioner Bland, I think, was that your position also?
Yes.
All right, and Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioners.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, I think you're fine with that as well. And now Commissioner Gustafson, when you said agree, I just want to make sure I knew which position you were agreeing.
I'm not even sure that there are two different positions here, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, which would be allowing aluminum clad wood, just with the right profile, okay? And Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I agree with the majority of the Commissioners' statement.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. So I think we have, while not unanimous, we have the votes for approval with modifications for the aluminum clad windows with panning as long as they continue to work with the staff on the replicating the bead and the profile, so.
Sarah.
Yes.
You can see that detail in the lower right image.
Yes.
Four bricks, four bricks up from the sill, you can see that flat and then the cork and the, and the bead on the interior side.
Yeah, yeah, the bead is a very typical, yeah.
Yeah, you can also see the ghost, interestingly, where the shutter pintle plate was attached to the brick mold there, too. Interesting.
That's interesting. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion?
Sure. Regarding eighty-five Christopher Street in Greenwich Historic District, the application is to replace the windows. I note that the building's scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Greenwich Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building. That the proposed two over two double hung windows will match the historic windows in terms of operation, configuration, and finish. That the change in material of the windows from wood to metal will be imperceptible as seen above the commercial ground floor and will not detract from the special architectural character of the building or historic district. The applicant has agreed to work with staff to refine the details, especially the brick mold and other details as discussed in this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Rich, let's call the vote and see where we are.
Okay, Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
That is approved with those modifications, please work closely with the staff on that, and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is item number five, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number two-one dash oh one three one one, two ninth Avenue in the Gansford Market Historic District, block six twenty-eight, lot one, an arts and crafts style warehouse building designed by Lafarge Morris and Cullen, built in nineteen thirteen and altered in nineteen fifty-three. The application is to install signage.
Applicants have joined the hearing, you may begin.
Great, thank you, it's Cass Dackelberger Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and I'm joined by Brandon Patrón of Lucid Motors, our client, and the project architect Christos Natanis from Marble Radzinger Architects. I'm going to run through the presentation, run through the presentation and with some comments from Brandon, and be happy to share, share any, or answer any questions you may have about the presentation. As described, the project address is at two ninth Avenue, located here in the Gansford Market Historic District. It's a six-story warehouse building seen on the far right. At the center, you can see, it's just at the edge of the district, just to the south of the Gansford Hotel with frontages on ninth Avenue and on Little West Twelfth Street. The, the site is to be a showroom or gallery for Lucid Motors, an exciting project for an automotive company, which is focused on the production of electric vehicles, and Brandon will mention a few comments about that, but I do want to just mention the proposal is for signage attached to the canopy above the two entries on ninth Avenue and on Little West Twelfth Street. Brandon, you want to step in and say a few words?
Yeah, very quickly just to introduce ourselves, because we're new to the community. Lucid Motors is a luxury electric vehicle company that's based in Silicon Valley, and we're opening our first showroom in the New York metro area at this property. Really excited to join the community, and yeah, go with us.
Thank you. So the, the overall summary slide here on the left is an existing view of the building. On the right is the proposal. Again, the proposal is for two signs. These are dimensional letters mounted onto a back panel on the front face of the canopy, one here on ninth Avenue and one here on Little West Twelfth Street. Because of the underlying zoning, this sign is proposed to have a halo illumination, but this sign, because it faces into a residential district, will match the detailing but will not have any of the halo lighting, and I'll show you details in just a moment. Some existing views of the building, again, a six-story warehouse building constructed in nineteen thirteen, arts and crafts, a very stripped down building. The canopy itself was actually installed in the nineteen eighties. Historically, the building had a small canopy at the main entry down on the north side of the ninth Avenue facade, but this, this canopy was added to the building prior to designation. It's a simple steel frame canopy with corrugated metal decking across the top and just mounted into the front facade, similar to, to other canopies seen elsewhere in the district. Looking at the building in these historic views from the nineteen forties, historically, the building had signs at the ground floor as well as this larger plaque sign on the corner and dimensional letters, dimensional panel signs on the spandrels on the upper floors. You can also see here, this is the original canopy at the building entry, which itself had a sign, sign panel mounted onto the, to the side of that, to that original canopy. And of course, the district, you all know the Gansford Market Historic District well. These two photos on the right from the nineteen thirties, on the left from the nineteen forties, just illustrate the sort of commercial vibrancy of the neighborhood. These are views on fourteenth Street looking west on the right toward, toward the steamship line pierheads that existed along the Hudson River. And of course, the history of the district is tied to the, the markets which existed around it, and in the thirties and forties in particular, all of these ground floor entities, these commercial entities, were in support of the hotel and restaurant trades and the steamship lines along the river. The, the district at that time was, was very active and very vibrant, and the type of signage often used at the ground floor was the same type of signage we're proposing. So panel signs with dimensional letters, sometimes on the front edge of the canopies, sometimes on the sides of the canopies. There's also, of course, painted wall signage, spandrel signage, but much of the, much of the signage was installed at the canopy at the ground floor level throughout the district. Some detail signs, this on West Thirteenth Street, again, a large panel sign on the side of this canopy on Thirteenth Street on this three-story building. This building, which is diagonally across from the project site on the corner of Greenwich Street and Gansford Street, again, panel signs, and then some details of some of the signage on, on Fourteenth Street. Looking at some of the signage that's been approved by the commission since the district's designation in two thousand and three, there, the staff has approved signage on the front edge of canopies, commission approvals for dimensional letters on the canopies, and then also lit signage elsewhere in the district, particularly focused at building entries or store entries. So there's a combination of signage that has been approved, similar to what we're proposing in association with entries and canopies. Looking at, again, a sort of rendered view, so this is the ninth Avenue side, the main entry to the store will be here, and then the proposal is for, for a sign over that, over that entry, and that sign will be halo lit, and then turning the corner onto Little West Twelfth Streets, and this in the foreground is what's referred to as Gansford Plaza today, another entry to the store and a separate sign over that entry. Looking at this in elevation, again, so we're looking at the scale of the building, the, the scale of the sign, we think, aside from it being associated with the entries to the showroom, it is proportional and in scale with this very robust six-story, six-story warehouse building. Turning the corner, similarly scaled, signage associated with, with the main entry. And then some details, the sign panels are fifteen and a half feet long, two foot, three inches tall, the letters themselves are just nine inches in height, and then on the other side, and then some details, so this is the section through the sign on ninth Avenue, the halo lit sign, the panel itself is about two inches thick. The letter, which will be a brushed stainless steel, is nine inches tall, one inch thick, and then the, the illumination is set behind the letter, so the letter is opaque, and there's just a glow behind it. This is, as I said, attached onto the front edge of the canopy, and the canopy is nonhistoric, it's dating to the, to the nineteen eighties. The detail on the Little West Twelfth Street side matches the ninth Avenue side, but just does not have the electrification for the halo illumination, so at the daytime, these will appear, appear identical. Some additional details for the signage, this is a night view, sort of a rendered view, so again, the letters themselves are opaque, and there's just a glow behind, behind the letters themselves, and then a detail of the attachment onto the front edge of the canopy. And then a summary slide, again, just illustrating the, the overall proposal, two signs, one with illumination on ninth Avenue, one non-illuminated on Little West Twelfth Street, attached to nonhistoric infill, and we think in terms of the character of the neighborhood, both in terms of its historic or commercial character, and also the, the character that the district has taken on really since designation, since the, about two thousand. This is a vibrant commercial neighborhood, and we think that this sign and the store itself and the showroom itself will contribute to the, to the vibrancy of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and do we have any questions, Commissioners? All right, I don't see any hands raised, so we will now move to testimony, and if you're here in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you, and I will turn it over to Lisa to run through the testimony.
Okay, this is an item which nobody signed up to speak, and if anybody here wants to speak, please raise your hand, but I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, all right, and Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommending approval of the application.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any final questions? I think it's a fairly straightforward application. So Commissioners, I am starting to request to unmute all of you, so look at your, for your screens to accept that, and we'll make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
Moved.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. And so the hearing is now closed, and we'll have our discussion, and I think, thank you, Cass, for a very detailed and thoughtful presentation. I think that we've seen lots of precedent for signage on canopies, and our rules for staff level approvals allow for hang, signs hanging from the canopy, but have not yet addressed signs being attached to the, above the canopy, and that's why that's before us, this is before us today. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start on this one?
Yep, I think this is quite reasonable and approvable. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Totally agree.
Commissioner Bland.
Yes, I agree, I think the, the horizontal exaggeration, let's say, of the five letters also give fit well with the horizontal nature of the canopy, too. It's a, it's a beautiful sign, actually.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I concur.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree.
Commissioner Chapin.
I agree.
And Commissioner Goldblum.
Agreed.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire, would you mind reading this one? I know you've read one already.
I think you skipped Commissioner Jefferson.
Oh, did I? I'm so sorry, Commissioner Jefferson.
It's a very sophisticated sign, and I agree.
Okay, thank you, okay.
In the matter of LPC twenty-one zero one three one one, two ninth Avenue in the Gansford Historic District, application to install signage, I recommend approval, finding that the placement of the signage on the face of the canopy is in keeping with the placement of historic signage sometimes found on buildings of this age and type. That the proposed signage will be simple in design, well proportioned to the canopy and typical in terms of material and finish, but the proposed metal halo lit letters facing ninth Avenue will not call undue attention to the installation and will be in keeping with the evolved commercial character of this historic district, and the cumulative amount of signage will not overwhelm the building or streetscape.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Okay, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye, aye, sorry, that wasn't clear.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron. Commissioner Shamir Baron, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Hey, that's approved, thank you. Okay, we're, we're going to break for lunch now, and we will come back in, at one o'clock, we'll begin the afternoon session. So for all of the attendees from the public that are in our meeting, we're going to ask you to leave the meeting at this time and then rejoin at one o'clock. And Commissioners, you just need to turn your cameras and your volume off, and if you could come back at five to one, then we can do the setup to ensure that we start right at one o'clock. Okay, thank you all, and see you in about thirty-five minutes.